Good evening and welcome to the September 6, 2023 regular meeting of the Holland City Council. I am Mayor Nathan Box and I'm calling this meeting to order. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Bird. Raymond.
Here.
Peters. Corbin. Soul.
Here.
Aaron Sors.
Here.
Hookstra.
Here.
Raymond.
Here.
Mayor Box.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Great, thank you Kathy. We're going to begin this evening's meeting as we have for many years, first with an opening prayer this evening by Councilmember Soul, followed immediately by the Pledge of Allegiance, and we would invite you to join us if you're so inclined.
Please join me. Father in heaven, I just thank you for this wonderful day. Thank you for the rain. Thank you for the sunshine. Thank you for the many blessings that we get to appreciate on a daily basis. I thank you for my colleagues. I thank you for the constituents. Lord, I pray for your wisdom and your guidance to keep us on always, always thinking of our constituents. Pray for peace, wisdom, and I thank you for the many blessings that Holland, that we get to take advantage of here in Holland, and in your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Belinda. Next item are our consent agenda items. These are items that are considered to be fairly routine and they've been reviewed by council members as part of our packet. They will be enacted in one motion unless a member of the public or a member of council asks to have an item removed from the consent agenda and placed in its regular order on the regular agenda. But before I ask that Kathy, would you please review the consent agenda for us, please?
For A, absence excused. For B, approval of minutes, August 16th, regular meeting, August 23, 2023 study session. For C, Osev Office. For D, transportation services. Grant access easement to the Holland Deacons Conference for 471 and 473 West 29th Street. For E, transportation services. Accept right-of-way easements from 1283 and 1269 East 16th Street. For F, transportation services. Approve agreement with CSX Transportation for grade crossing improvements in support of the Sixth Street Reconstruction Project. For G, transportation services. Approve MDOT agreement for the city's share of MDOT's business BL-196 Chicago Drive project. For H, Community Neighborhood Services. Scheduling of public hearing, CDBG Program 2022-23 Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report, September 20th, 2023. For I, purchasing. Police operations declare items as surplus, fitness equipment. For J, purchasing. Police operations declare items as surplus, bicycles. For K, finance. PA-198 Speculative Tax Abatements. Set public hearing for Lake Shore Industrial Properties LLC, 766 East 48th Street. For L, purchasing. Approve purchase of two hybrid police detective cars. For M, purchasing. Approve purchase of one Ford F-450 chassis. For N, Management and Administrative Services. Downtown parking operations and maintenance assessment. Schedule public hearing of necessity for September 20, 2023. For O, Management and Administrative Services. Downtown snowmelt operations and maintenance assessment. Schedule public hearing of necessity for September 20, 2023. For P, Management and Administrative Services. Downtown principal shopping district assessment. Schedule public hearing of necessity for September 20, 2023. For Q, Management and Administrative Services. Human Resources Full-Time Certified Permit Technician Position Request.
Great, thank you Kathy. Is there any member of the public that would like to have an item removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda? Seeing none. Any member of council that would like to have an item removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda? Seeing none there. What is the pleasure of council in regard to the consent agenda?
Moved to approve.
Moved by Soul is her support.
Support.
Support by Aaron Sors. Any discussion? Seeing none. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Raymond.
Yes.
Peters. Corbin. Soul.
Yes.
Aaron Sors.
Yes.
Hookstra.
Yes.
Raymond.
Yes.
Mayor Box.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great, thank you Kathy. Next item on the agenda is public comment. Under the Open Meetings Act of the state of Michigan, we provide the public the opportunity to speak at all of our meetings, not only our council meetings, but also our board, committee, and commission meetings. We do limit your time to five minutes. We ask that each person speak only once, and when you approach the microphone, please state that your name and the municipality in which you live. This is one-way communication. It's an opportunity for you to speak to us. We don't engage in discussion at this time or answer direct questions, but if it's a, if there is a question, perhaps staff will be able to circle back to you after, after the meeting. Please note that there are three lights on the dais in front of me. There's a green light, a yellow light, and a red light. The green light means you're doing well on time. The yellow light means that you have one minute left, and the red light means that your time has expired, and we do ask that you adhere to that. Now having said that, is there anyone here who would like to address council at this time? If so, please come forward. And would you state your name and municipality for the record?
Martha Capastani, Holland. All right. Good evening, council, and thank you for your service. I'm here tonight to speak to you about the real story behind Drag Queen Story Hour. As you may remember, last summer I spoke about proper age restrictions for events at Pride Month in Holland, and I complimented the council for respecting those common sense boundaries. Unfortunately, this past June, those common sense boundaries were challenged by bringing in a Drag Queen Story Hour event for children. When people in our community became upset with it, they voiced their feelings, and it was portrayed as anti-LGBTQ plus hate. It's not about hate. It's about grooming and sexualizing kids as well as societal provocation. It's about portraying those who are uncomfortable with Drag Queen Story Hour as hateful and intolerant of the whole LGBTQ plus community, which is untrue. As I shared before in previous comments, the organization Gays Against Groomers have much to say about Drag Queen Story Hour, and they are not on board with it. And I stand with the many from within the gay community regarding this issue of protecting the innocence of children. What you may not know is there is a manifesto written for the purpose of Drag Queen Story Hour, and it is not what you think. Drag Queen Story Hour is now a well-funded organization with 40 local chapters. Harris Cornstein, a gender queer college professor/drag queen, now sits on the board and is one of the authors of this manifesto. I will, for the lack of time, hit some of the highlights of their agenda. We know drag has had a much darker history and reputation, although some would like to paint a different picture. But through commercialization and a bit of toning down, it's come out of the darkness of night and into the daylight. It has come into our lives through television, libraries, community events, and now our schools under the guise of LGBTQ plus acceptance, but this is a Trojan horse. Their own manifesto states that their orientation is fundamentally different than the movement towards the inclusion or the assimilation of the LGBTQ plus people. They state that they use the goodwill associated with the gay and lesbian rights movement as a means of bringing drag performances into communities, labeling them as family-friendly. This manifesto, it's called Drag Pedagogy, a teaching method, defined as the playful practice of queer imagination in early childhood. They believe that the institutional management of gender in the West has been used as a way of maintaining racist and capitalist modes of reproduction/production. So to disrupt this dynamic, this new drag teaching method serves as a way of stimulating queer imagination, teaching kids how to live queerly and bringing queer ways of knowing and being into the education of young children. They explain that this is an intellectual and political project. Anyway, these drag queens and activists work toward undermining traditional notions of sexuality, replacing the biological family with the ideological family, and arousing transgressive sexual desires in young children. They want to destabilize and transform the normative function of education. They state in this manifesto that the traditional life path, growing up, getting married, working 40 hours a week, and raising a family is an oppressive norm that must be deconstructed and subverted. Their goal is to disrupt the binary between womanhood and manhood, cede the room with transgender, transgressive themes, and break the reproductive future of the nuclear family and the sexually monogamous marriage, all of which are considered mechanisms of heterosexual capitalist oppression. To continue, the books they read promote this basic narrative at a very early age in an attempt to begin confusing and desensitizing these children to adult themes. Their goal is to facilitate the child's transition into the ideological family. The manifesto contains highly sexual language, double entendres blurring the lines between adult sexuality and childhood innocence. The authors of this manifesto make no bones about it. The purpose of this teaching method is to reformulate the children's relationship with sex, sexuality, and eroticism, and offering a queer relationality between adult and child. They even go as far as to say the very concept of childhood innocence is a hetero-patriarchal illusion. So in closing, society is measured by what it does to its children, and right now, we are getting a failing grade. You now know that there is a dark agenda behind this movement. It's deceptive, it's divisive, and it will be destructive for our children and our community. I'm asking you to protect the Holland community. Please do not let Pride Month in Holland devolve into something unrecognizable as it has already done in so many places throughout the country. Thank you.
Thank you. And just for the record, I'd like to state that Quincy Bird has joined us this evening. Welcome, Mr. Bird. Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? And would you please state your name and municipality for the record?
Okay, my name is Lynn Barrow Brook Roloff. I live in Ottawa County in Hudsonville, and I'm employed in Holland, Michigan. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for letting me share. What I'm going to share tonight goes along with what was just shared regarding Drag Queen Story Hour. This excerpt comes from the Gays Against Groomers website section called Frequently Asked Questions. The question is, why are gays against groomers so against drag queens? So this is the gay people saying why they're against drag queens, okay? We don't hate drag queens. We hate children being exposed to raunchy and erotic behavior, things drag queens are notorious for. We're all for adults attending drag shows for fun on their own time. It is common sense to preserve the innocence of children by keeping them out of adult spaces like strip clubs, gay bars, and drag shows. Once again, predators can be found anywhere at any time. No group is exempt from scrutiny. There are so many ways to teach children kindness, self-expression, and acceptance without relying on a man dressed as a woman. In addition to being inappropriate and highly sexualized, it is also inherently one-sided, as there isn't enough or hardly any representation of drag kings. Drag, as seen in 2023, is innately misogynistic and completely adult-oriented in its essence. This is why we think it's totally inappropriate for children, and we believe that all sorts of drag performances, let alone story hours, could easily promote harmful stereotypes in the young minds of our children. This is not age-appropriate education. We suggest sticking to hiring princesses, story characters, puppet shows, musicians, and clowns. The recent bill passed in Tennessee is a great example of classifying drag as adult cabaret entertainment to keep minors separated from the experience. The gay community is not a monolith, and their voices should be heard as well regarding this issue. Thank you. And I just want to, something that was really prevalent to me, I was in Lake Dora, Florida this summer, joining my grandson, who's six and a half, soon to be seven years old, and amalgamated to the hotel room was like a bar recreational kind of area, and they were having a drag queen show. And Maximus, who is six and a half years old, saw signage, and he said, "Gemma, why is that man dressed like a lady?" And so just that visual thing that his little innocent mind showed at six and a half years old, you know, you know, I had to start processing that a little bit with him. So do we want to be at a community that is not propagating or promoting that? Or do we want a community that is promoting love, joy, peace, patience, gentleness, tenderness, thankfulness to our children in a safe community, in a safe environment that's positive? So I want you all to think of your children, and your children's children, and your children's children. Because historically, Holland has been a beautiful community that's safe. It's positive. When you walk down the farmer's walkway, you'd go to a sale, you're seeing beautiful families holding hands with their children on the beach and all that. Yesterday, I was just on that beautiful walk on, from the lighthouse.
Please make sure you speak into the microphone.
I was just on that beautiful walk from the lighthouse to spyglass. Beautiful families, mothers, grandparents, just, just a beautiful experience. And I think that's the environment that we want to uphold in this community. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? And would you please state your name and municipality for the record?
Anne Henrickson-Zealand. Last city council meeting during the public comment, a gentleman, Joe Spalding, spoke about the Ottawa County Commissioners. I've heard him speak at their meetings as well, which echoes the same ugly, angry attitude against the Ottawa Impact Organization. He desires to recall all the impact commissioners and Nancy DeBoer. Mr. Spalding also organized a nasty protest against focus on the family bookstore here in Holland. I also spoke at the city council that night after Mr. Spalding. My topic was the Lansing Potential New Law of Misgendering that would make it a felony of prison and $10,000 fine for anyone who consistently uses the wrong pronoun for a transgendered individual. So what is the difference between Joe Spalding and me? I don't know what motivates him, but I want to speak to what motivates me. I speak from my heart as a person who often sees things short-sightedly, another name for sinner and/or hypocrite. But I ask God to forgive me in His Son Jesus Christ for this, and I walk in freedom with a changed life and a better attitude towards people, a better love. My purpose in speaking is from the mindset, the government is on God's shoulders. This government of God has put this city council in place in Holland to strengthen the body of Christ. Your ordinance, even though we don't agree, has made us look at the log in our own eye when we discriminate over the speck in anyone else's life. It's humbling. I love Holland because God loves Holland. Our faith has been handed down to us from God. We will not stand back and allow our freedom of faith to be neglected, and that is what has happened with this council. But I, I want to speak personally about each one of you and how I know you. And we'll start with Quincy Bird. I sat at his kitchen table for, I don't know, three hours, talking to him about skin color, and that skin color is a gift from God, and that makes him distinguished among the rest. And he holds that respectfully in this council. Jay Peters, we spent three hours in a coffee shop in Zealand. Out of the compassion of his heart for a mother who had a daughter who was transgendering into a man, he listened well and comforted me and seemed to understand, and we have that kind of relationship now. Scott Corbin invited me to the airport with his constituents, and I could hear that he was open for their questions, and he knows the laws and know how they came about. So he really educated them, a man of integrity, Nathan Box. One of my favorite things is your Megan and how she sat before me at Children and Worship at Christ Memorial Church, loving the stories of Jesus, and I couldn't, I just admired her in her intelligence and a beautiful young lady she has become. Soul, I want to speak to you. Coming to 633 Ministries two weeks ago with your granddaughter, what a joy it was to see you there. They had back-to-school giveaway, 200 backpacks. They gave bouncy house, hot dogs, ice cream on the city, and it was a joy to see you there. Nikki, the city council, meet the city council civic center. You always cordially welcomed me, but I got to sit with your husband, and what a joy it was for him to tell me how proud he is of how you serve the city. And David, same event, and I was able to talk to you and ask for your forgiveness for a misunderstanding, actually a disagreement, from years ago, and we had such a good conversation. And Lynn, thank you so much for your thank you note over those chocolates. I still have it. It means a lot to me. So what's the difference between Joe Spalding and me? I love Holland, and so do you. And I am hoping that Holland respects the people of faith. Tim, forgot you. That is very important. We celebrated the life of Lisa Whitman this past week, and we were there for a phenomenal service of faith, of a woman who lived her life that way. And it was so good to be together, and Quincy was there also. The last song was...
Mr. Mayor, that is five minutes. I'm, I'm sorry, your time has expired.
You need to hear this.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? Seeing none? Oh, yep, please come forward. Would you state your name and municipality for the record?
Sure. My name is Doug Zylestra. I am the county commissioner for the city of Holland. Live at 152 East 24th Street. I was here maybe a month ago, kind of kicking off our budget process in Ottawa County. So I did want to stop by and give a quick update. Over the last few weeks, you know, I think many of you read in the Sentinel. We've had a lot of discussions about public health, right? Board leadership has been working on a proposal to significantly cut public health here in Ottawa County. There have been various proposals presented by leadership, but what they have in common is that they all make deep cuts to popular needed programs here in Ottawa County in ways that will have a very negative consequence for a large swath of Ottawa County residents. These cuts, in addition to being damaging to public health, are highly unwarranted as Ottawa County has seen near-record revenue growth these past few years, and especially this year. On September 12th, we will have our only public hearing on the proposed budget and the associated proposed cuts at our nine o'clock AM meeting. I would encourage all city of Holland residents in Ottawa County to attend and voice your opinion. If you are not able, you are also welcome to reach out to us by phone, email, or online public comment. Residents, as always, are welcome to reach out to me at dsylestratmyotawa.org or at my personal number 616-443-4281. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? Seeing none, I will close the public comment period. Next item on our agenda, item number seven, special order of the day, public hearings, antiques, et cetera, second-hand business revocation hearing. Mr. Van Beek?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, council, members of the public. In a moment, and they can transition up here now, Tricia Dryer, Assistant Director in Community Neighborhood Services, and Brett Grundeig, our fire marshal, are here, and they're going to make a presentation to you, bring you up to date on an item in front of you, and ultimately a recommendation that you revoke a business license. I'm sure they will go through this, but I will let you know that as a city, and certainly these two staff are great examples of this, we try to work with people that maybe are not following our various city ordinances or in many cases, state or federal law. And our effort always is in compliance, particularly in items that are for the health and safety of the community. Sometimes, though, we're not successful in getting that compliance. Typically, we are. And then sometimes, unfortunately, we get to a situation like we have tonight. So just want to give that as an initial context of what our efforts always are. But every once in a while, we have something like this, and Tricia and Brett will walk you through that. So thank you very much for your efforts and for the presentation tonight.
So I think we're going to not take a whole lot of time, so please stop us if you have questions or if something's not clear. I'm sure everyone is aware of the antique business on the corner of 16th Street and Central Avenue. We received a complaint back in January of this year about the conditions inside of the building and a lack of plumbing facilities in the building. So while the business was open, one of our housing staff, Brett, and myself went to check it out and see what the complaint was about, see if there was any validity in the complaint. So when we went there, we did find many violations. Violations of both Chapter 14, our property maintenance code, Chapter 11, which is enforced by the fire department, in some very concerning conditions about happening on both the inside and the outside of the building. So here's an overview of the building. So some of the violations that we found include electrical hazards with illegal extension cords, faulty wiring, significant accumulations of materials inside of the building, no bathroom, no running water for the employee. Exits were blocked by materials. The furnace, the water heater, the electrical service were all blocked by materials and were not accessible for servicing or in the event of an emergency. There were some interior cosmetic damage, some exterior cosmetic damage. And then we also found a large accumulation of cat litter, feces, and garbage in the small yard area behind the building. So we went multiple times to the business. We talked to the owner. She was there. We explained why we were, why we were there. We explained what the issues were. We gave her multiple opportunities to correct the significant hazards. And as of today, we have not seen any progress, nothing, not even an attempt to try to correct some of these items. So all of the violations from our list remain. My department and the fire department sent a request to the clerk's office indicating that we did not support the renewal of the annual business license. So when the annual business licenses were approved by council, this business was not on the list. We were hoping she would make an effort to correct some of the items, and then her business license could be reinstated. Unfortunately, that has not happened, and she has stopped communicating with our office. So the next step in the process is for council to officially revoke the business license because she is continuing to operate. So we've sent her letters. We've asked her to make corrections. She's not made corrections, and her business remains open. And our department and the fire department feel very strongly that this is a significant public health hazard and safety hazard. So I have a couple of pictures just to show a couple of the things that we're talking about to give you an idea of what we mean by electrical hazards. So we have extension cords plugged in. This is at the front of the building. There's some illegal adapters to convert a three-prong plug to a two-prong plug, basically overriding the grounding system, which is one of the safety items supplied on a lot of equipment. There are many light fixtures on the ceiling that are dangling or have the light fixture hanging by the wire. hanging by the wires. This is a picture on the ceiling near one of those light fixtures where there's electrical wires coming through the ceiling that are just taped together and then left exposed. This is hard to see, but this is, I have a closer picture, this is electrical, multiple cords and electrical outlets all plugged into a converter or adapter. So there's multiple cords being run off of probably an inadequate circuit. On the outside, there's some siding that's coming off, that's exposed the electrical mass and the structure underneath of the siding. There's some temporary light fixtures that are on the back of the building that are also plugged in using extension cords that are drooping and falling and have been in place for years and a lot of this electrical wiring is not rated for continuous use. Extension cords are intended to be plugged in, used for a couple of hours while you're in the room, unplugged and put away. They're not intended to be run throughout the building, snaked under carpet, over furniture and permanently left plugged in. That's a violation of the manufacturer's labeling and a fire hazard. Some of the accumulations in the store, there are some in the front where there are just materials piled on top of each other and at first glance, some of it doesn't seem that bad, but some of the items are quite heavy. In some of the areas, they impede the walkway. There are items stacked and piled in areas where they can fall and they can tip over and due to the sheer quantity of materials inside of the building, we have some significant concerns about the structural stability of the building. There are a lot of materials in here. And this is in the back area, items are stacked and piled and you can kind of see my hand. It was winter, this was January, so I had a big winter coat on, I was all bundled up. But at, there's a red line on that picture, that's my shoulder and there are items piled at least six feet up in the air with a teeny weeny walkway in between, covering the entire back of the building. These are some of the photos that were taken by the fire marshal showing walkways that are obstructed because there's so many materials in there. You can't even walk to the back of the building, the area where the, there is a bathroom in the building, you can't get to it because you would have to load up multiple dumpsters to even access the area. You can't get to the basement, you can't get to the second floor, you can't get to the electrical service, they're completely blocked by these accumulations. This is an area to the left, we were talking about it earlier today, I believe to the left in front of the cabinet is the access to the stairs that go to the basement, completely This is a picture showing that as you enter the store, you first walk into the building, that walkway is about 20 inches wide, which is about this wide, which is not safe. That's a fire code hazard for exiting, safe exiting of the structure in the event of an emergency. We are mostly concerned about the electrical hazards and the accumulations. When we sent the violation list, we requested that those items be addressed first and then after those items are addressed, that, then let's look at the cosmetics. We can see water infiltration, the paint is old, it's starting to peel, it probably contains hazardous materials, you can see different areas where there's water marks on the ceiling. It's time for a little update. And a couple of the ceiling tiles look like they're about ready to fall down, not sure if that's water or if that's a structural issue from upstairs because there is an apartment on the second floor that I have never been in in my career here at the city of Holland. To the best of my knowledge, it is not occupied by people, but it's filled with stuff. On the outside, we have some trees and vegetation growing right next to the building, potentially damaging the foundation. I have not been in the basement, so I don't know how bad that is. Again, we have some siding pieces that are coming apart. When we were there in January, there was a significant buildup of ice on the roof, not sure why, the heat was not real high, so I don't know what's causing all of the ice, but there was a lot of ice and a lot of water on the roof of the building. The whole second floor is deteriorated, the siding up on the back porch there. We did find some large holes in the foundation of the building. And then we were appalled by the quantity of waste that was in the small grassy area. There's some white paper material, there's clearly cat litter and there's feces. If you go by there today, the area is completely overgrown by the bush that's there on the corner between this property and the neighbor. I think that's it. So in summary, the violations remain uncorrected, there are significant health and safety issues that impact the business owner, any customers that might go into the building and the general public. Despite notification that the business must close, it remains open. So the city clerk, our department and public safety are recommending that city council officially revoke the secondhand dealer business license for antiques, et cetera. Do you have anything you'd like to add?
Just to kind of echo what Tricia had explained, none of the violations have been corrected. They all are life safety hazards to anybody that would be in the store and any firefighters that would be responding if there was a fire at the business.
Any questions from council for staff?
So, yes, I do.
Yeah, go ahead.
So the first complaint was in January of this year. That would be the first complaint this year because this is not new to this year.
That's correct.
And so there have been, have there been complaints before?
There have been complaints before, not this, so yes, there have been complaints before. So the property owner who owns this building used to also live next door. So we didn't get as many complaints, but now there are neighbors next door and I don't know if that's why, but this was the opportunity that we took to do the inspection. We had a little bit more staff time and felt that it was important for us to see the inside of the building and determine if there were issues.
Well, thank you for that. Yeah, happy to close it down. I cannot believe anyone, a customer would actually go in there. But thank you.
Any other questions?
So, for a license re, so we've done this before, once. I think there were three of us on council at that time when we did this. So help me to remember if you would, if their licenses are revoked, how long do they have before they can get back into business if they wanted to?
Great question. So once the significant violations are corrected, we would support an application to reopen the business.
So what would consist of the significant?
The electrical hazards and the accumulation of materials.
And access issues.
And access, yes, fire access issues to the exits in the basement and the mechanical equipment.
Okay. So for those items, I guess the, for those items, is there anything that the city could do to assist?
There have been many nonprofit organizations and neighbors that have offered to help. She so far has not taken anyone up on their offer.
So I guess if this happens and she continues business, what's the next step and what happens?
The next step would be to have the police department notify her that her license has been revoked, they would tell her to close the business. We don't allow her to operate the business without a license and then we would wait, once the business is closed, continue to give her time to make repairs and then if the building becomes a more significant public health hazard, then we would have it declared a dangerous structure through a different process.
Different process, okay. So if she continues to run her business after licenses have been revoked, then we're talking prosecution, jail time or something?
We would ask her to close the business and leave. We could probably padlock the doors shut if we needed to or secure it so that people couldn't go in, but we would not charge her criminally.
Okay.
To the best of my knowledge.
Okay. All right, it stinks, but okay. Well, it's not public comment right now, so, all right.
Mr. Hookstra?
I'll wait till the motion is made.
Any other questions for staff? Yes, Ms. Sol.
Thank you. Thanks for the information. So, so the, the property owner is not the business owner or is it?
The property owner and the business owner are the same.
Okay, they are the same. And because of the unkempt or unsafe, were you not able to go into the basement or just because of the businesses, business?
So we tried and... See if I can go back. This was as far as you could get before you literally had to start climbing over debris and material. It was physically impossible. So think about if you brought your, if you went to Meyer or any store and you bought five bags of stuff and you dumped it on the floor and then you dumped more and more and more for years and years and years until you had a pile that was this high and I don't even know how deep. It was physically impossible to get through there.
Okay, so not for the lack of effort of trying, you just couldn't because of obstruction?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
So the path walking back there was about, I had to turn sideways and it was about this narrow and you had to kind of inch and there was stacks and stacks and it would be very unsafe.
The photos do some justice, but they don't give you the full depth of what it is that you're looking at. I mean, that's a six foot, that's a door frame high pile on the right-hand side of the photo and it's equally as high on the other side and the width is maybe half of this desk to, to access and when you reach that, that terminus where it goes and you can go down the stairs, there's, there's nowhere to go. And the utilities are in the basement, the things that we would normally access to shut power, control water, control anything in those, we physically can't get to, so.
Thanks. And so the water is not running, do we know is the, I mean, because I don't think there's any structure that can be without running water, I mean, at least-
That's correct. So the building code does require a bathroom and running water be provided in the building even for use by the business owner or employees that work there. I checked with the board of public works and it appears that the water was requested to be shut off back in 2018. So there is no running water in the building.
And so you can run a business without water?
That's why we're here today.
No, but I'm saying like VPW and city of Holland, like we didn't catch that, like it's been 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, five years without water. So I'm just saying like-
If you call the board of public works tomorrow and say, can you please shut off my water, they will come out and shut off your water. We aren't going to know unless we call or have a reason to inquire.
Yeah, there's no flag, there's no like, hey, their water is off, like it's a business.
We get notified if it's shut off for non-payment, then we help them make sure that everybody's safe and has working utilities, but if an owner just calls and says, hey, can you shut this off, we don't know.
Interesting, okay. Well, I'm not turning off my water, but I'm just saying, interesting. Yeah, no, I just, no, I mean, we can't permit this to go on, I mean, there's a standard and all, most businesses I imagine are following and so if we make an exception, it's not.
So during business licensing time, Brett, myself or our coworkers visit every single business on the list. All of the junk haulers, we make a visit to all of the public lodging facilities, residential care facilities, every single facility gets an inspection. If they have an automotive dealer's license, it's usually we just go and look and make sure they don't have any blatant violations, trash around the building, broken windows. And most of us frequent a lot of the secondhand, like Goodwill, we're in there, so we've been there, we know what it looks like, but this is one that we haven't been in in a while. So with the complaint and we knew business license inspections were coming up, we took the opportunity to make a trip.
Okay. That's all I got, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Mr. Freeman?
More of just a statement, I was there the spring as well going in because our business is down the street. All of your, are not exaggerations, I would say they're underestimations of what's taking place there and so thank you for your work.
Any other questions for staff?
Yes, comments, it's unbelievable.
Yeah, question for Mr. Corbin.
Brett, if one of your firemen were in there to rescue somebody, could they turn around in that space with their turnout gear?
I don't believe so, no. And we, we have a system that we use to create pre-plans for a lot of businesses in the city and this is one of only about two buildings that we have an actual, only go in if you're sure there's someone in there. Otherwise, it's not safe for anybody, it's, we wouldn't commit to an interior attack on this type of a building.
Yep, Ms. Sol.
One more question about the cats and the feces, so do we think there's cats living in there or is it just neighborhood cats or do we know like?
When we were there, there were two or three cats-
Yeah, there were somewhere-
-in the building.
Yeah.
In the building?
Yes. Whether they live there all the time or she takes them back and forth, I don't have any idea, but it appears based on the pattern that a litter box was getting dumped outside.
Well, curious, did you see any kitty litters inside the building?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, you didn't see some?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. So this owner does not, did I interrupt you? Okay, the owner used to live next door?
Correct.
Does she live in this place?
Nope.
Do we know? Okay.
She lives at a different address.
Okay.
Down the road.
Very good, thank you.
Ms. Raymond?
Yeah, and just to confirm, she, you said she stopped communicating with you. It sounds to me like she has never communicated with you and is, has not expressed any interest in addressing these issues, is that?
She did send a letter to the city clerk after they did not accept her renewal application and it was not very kind. That's the only communication we received.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff?
I mean, just as an ongoing thing, so enforcement's the issue here.
Yes.
And it has been, eh, since I moved here 40 years ago, this place was here. Thanks.
We need to do a public comment, or a public hearing first. Yep, great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
This is public hearing, so we do need to do, open this up for a public hearing. Any member of the public who would like to speak in regard to this particular item, please approach the podium, state your name and municipality for the record and the same five-minute time limit applies.
Okay, I'll be short. My name is Lynn Breibro Krolas, I live in Hudsonville, Michigan. I was an insurance agent for Ottawa Kent Insurance for 15 years. I'm still licensed, but I'm not practicing in that profession. This is a fire hazard. This is, all the materials and stuff that she described is combustible. If that place should catch on fire and you can't, you know, I know we have a qualified fire department, we have great people that work in this municipality. However, if the wind should catch and that would ignite, it would expose Holland and everything around it. And you all have probably watched things go up in flame with fires when the wind comes up and we know that happens historically in Holland all the time. So with that being said, I think it should be shut down immediately, it's a fire hazard, all that material, housekeeping, everything is combustible and we need to be concerned about the businesses in this city and the exposure thereof. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public who would like to address council in regard to this particular Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. What is the pleasure of council in regard to this item? Could you speak into the microphone just so the folks at home can hear you, Mr. Corbin? Could you speak into the microphone just so the, the folks at home can hear you, Mr. Corbin?
Motion approval, item seven eight, as recommended by staff.
Moved by Corbin, is there support?
Support.
Support by Bird, any discussion, Mr. Hookstra?
Uh, yes, uh, this is an unfortunate, uh, continuation of a litany of, uh, problems that have, um, the city has engaged with this property owner. And I give kudos and, and thanks to Tricia and her staff just being patient, uh, over a long period of time. Uh, Quincy, to your, your question, and as Tricia has expressed, there have been numerous opportunities and attempts at trying to help this, uh, homeowner. Particularly when she still owned the home next door to try to help fix it up, there were neighborhood organizations ready to step in. And, uh, the communication methodology that you heard described is consistent, it either ceased or it was antagonistic. It's, uh, I kind of grieve over this because, you know, she's not a bad person necessarily, but obviously there's a, something going on there. And I agree that the condition of this, uh, building is certainly not safe for anyone going in looking to buy something. Uh, particularly for our public safety folks, uh, it's an untenable situation. I'm sad to see this come to this and I wish that sh- this person would be, um, more accepting of help. But you can lead a horse to water and that's about as far as you can go. And our staff has done an amazing job, uh, at being patient and trying to make the best of a bad situation. So I guess we're left with what we're left with, thank you.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Peters. Corbin?
Yes.
Sol?
Yes.
Arnsouris?
Yes.
Hookstra?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, next item on the agenda, item number nine, written petitions and communications. In addition to providing the opportunity for the public to speak to us directly in person during our meetings, we also have an email address where you can email the entirety of council. Uh, and that email address is publiccomment@cityofholland.com. Once again, publiccomment@cityofholland.com. Uh, we accept those in between our regular meetings, uh, if we receive them, council members read them as part of our packet and then we accept them into the record, although we do not read them out loud. We do not have any this evening, to my knowledge, uh, which means we move on to the next item on the agenda, which is item twelve E three point one, Riverview Park Pavilion Edition. Mr. Van Beek?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Um, I'm not sure if it's the Andy and Garrett Show tonight, it's the Garrett Show, hey, welcome again, Garrett, come on up. Um, you have in front of you a recommendation to do another, um, improvement in a park. And it seemed to go over really well and seemed like a great opportunity recently, when we talked about doing a park improvement. To kind of unveil that and not only look for your approval to do that improvement, but also to talk about that particular part in more detail. So, thanks Garrett for being with us tonight and why don't you, uh, walk us through Riverview Park in whole, but specifically this addition.
Yeah, thanks for having me, Council, good to see you again. Uh, so obviously the agenda item is just a pavilion addition, but I think it's important to talk about the park as a whole. Uh, Riverview Park, uh, not a ton of people, it's one of our hidden gems that we've been chipping away at for a while now. Uh, we program it quite a bit because there's a good amount of green space there, um, but it's, it's a space that I want to continue to invest in. And we want to continue to divest, invest in as a department. And, uh, that investment really started when council approved lights, uh, there's about three hundred thousand dollars worth of lights that went into that facility. Uh, they've been great to use, they're state of the art, state of the art there. And, um, this is actually the site where Hope College used to play their football games, uh, that's, that's what I was told anyway, so. And then it was used by HPS after the fact, so this is kind of a cool way to continue to honor, uh, that facility, that park, uh, and through our recreational facility, our recreation activities. Uh, and then I'll get into some other aspects of why this is an important piece of, uh, the, the area that it's going to contribute to. So you can see some of the programming uses that, uh, we have down there, uh, whole bunch of different things. We've lea- leaned into the adult wellness classes down there with Freedom Village being in that area. Uh, it's on, for those of you guys who don't know, it's on Fourth and Columbia is where the nearest intersection is to this park. And then what we would like to do is add the sand volleyball aspect, uh, the reason behind that is West Michigan's a big sand volleyball community. Um, and we have about five hundred participants, uh, through adult sand volleyball right now. And we're just kind of at capacity, uh, we use the state park, but we also want to provide resources closer to home for our City of Holland residents. Uh, so why are we gonna use, why are we gonna continue to invest in Riverview is the downtown location? Uh, kind of a undercurrent that, uh, we've heard from a lot of our residents, our participants, is that, uh, downtown isn't always for us, it's for tourists. And, uh, this is one way, I don't, I don't agree with that and I assume that everyone here does not agree with that. So this is just a way that we're gonna invest in this and continue to drive programming downtown. I think it's a good way to help out downtown on certain, uh, lulls in the, in the seasons. And then, um, just make sure that everybody in the community knows that we're investing in them, uh, in important, what would be considered valuable pieces of, uh, land and real estate. And then there's been a ton of investments that are, have gone on and then will continue to go on in this area. Uh, the ice skating park, obviously, be, everybody knows about that taking place. And that's a really important piece of the continued investment into this area because one of the biggest, uh, I guess, features, and it sounds odd, but. Having a bathroom building, a hard bathroom building rather than just portable toilets at, uh, our program sites makes a huge difference, especially at the youth levels. And so with the ice skating park, uh, being added, not near or not too far away from there, we're gonna be able to use that pretty much, or will be year-round. Uh, with the programming that's at Riverview in addition to obviously all winter. The playscape, uh, is a huge, uh, enhancement to that area and that provides the ability for adult, uh, when we have adult programming going on, that they can bring their kids along. They can play on the playscape while the, the, um, adults are playing and recreating in their own way. Window on the waterfront has continued, MCIF, uh, project additions and the lighting, uh, will continue to, uh, be another enhancement that's, uh, in that area. And then Sixth Street is ripped up right now and that's gonna be an awesome way to drive foot traffic. And I think it's gonna be a really cool aspect when we have people that are maybe not from around here, that they continue to walk through Sixth Street. Because there's all these cool things that continue to drive them further and then we want Riverview to be, uh, as they start the ice park and then they go to Sally Small Playscape and then they see Riverview. We want that to fit into the standards that we have, uh, for the City of Holland. And then as they take a walk down, uh, Window on the Waterfront Trail. And then I already talked about the new lights that are there that are, uh, very welcome and appreciated addition. Uh, for the park changes specifically, so getting to the point of the pavilion being added. There's a, uh, baseball, uh, infield that's gonna be there, that's gonna be removed because we don't really have a need for it. And it's not the best location for a baseball, uh, facility, so that's gonna be turned into two sand volleyball courts. Uh, the pavilion will be behind what would be, uh, the, the backstop that was there that has been ripped out. Uh, there'll be angled parking along Fifth Street, uh, the surface that we'll use for that is to be determined, but, uh, eventually we're hoping to have that paved. And then we'll add some, uh, new trees to this, uh, it says southwest, but it's, uh, actually the southeast part of the pavilion, or actually southwest, I second guessed myself, but. Um, so project costs, the pavilion is the big driver, uh, for the cost on here, but there's a lot of other small costs in here. I just want to make a note that, uh, because of the investment that council has made into the Parks and Recreation Department, this project costs a lot less. Because we have the ability to perform a lot of the work in-house, uh, and that's a pretty cool aspect. Jamie Scott and his team, um, are actually already, uh, they made their way down today to that, uh, that site to be able to start ripping out some of the infield stone dust. And, uh, so we can start working on converting this part to a sand volleyball court. But as you see throughout the other, uh, we've been, tried to be as intentional as possible, uh, with the, the dollars that are spent on this project. The MCIF project reads as fifty thousand dollars. And so we are going to pull from a, a few different other, uh, aspects of our, of our budget to make this process, or to make this project work. And that's all I have for you.
Thank you, questions for staff? Oh, Ms. Sol.
What's your, um, current, um, numbers for volleyball, because you said you're at capacity?
Yeah, we're right around, I mean, it's hard to tell with teams, um, because they, it's four V four, but, uh, we're at about five hundred.
And they're all at the state park, doesn't, um?
Not all.
No, okay.
Nope, so we have two sand volleyball courts out at Met Urban, uh, that we do program happily.
Okay, so you divide it from there and, um, the state park or whatnot?
Correct, yep.
Awesome, no, I, I like the idea, um, that it'll be closer, because sometimes a state park is too far for me. I'm a outsider, but anyways, um, your volleyball, intro, like beginner stuff, like for seniors, fifty-ish. Don't get hurt, you know, in the sand.
We can work on that part, so yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Vreeman?
What's your anticipated timeline, assuming this all goes well tonight?
Yeah, so it's about fourteen to sixteen weeks, uh, for the install through Sinclair Recreation, uh, that's when, you know, we predict it to be done. And then we have all the other pieces that will be ready to go, um, so we'll be able to use it for next spring.
So by Christmas?
That's really by Christmas, but if you want to try it.
What year?
Ms. Arnsouris?
Um, well, thank you for what you do with Parks and Rec and making our city beautiful now useful, if you like to play sports, you know? Um, but, um, I have, I, I didn't know where Riverview Park was, actually, I didn't know that's what you called it. So I looked it up and it used to be called Athletic Park and then Waterworks Park and now Riverview. And as I looked down, it said it's a municipal ballpark established in twenty eighteen, um, by BPW citizens, merchants, and the city fathers. So I thought maybe you want to take that antiquated term of city fathers with the city mothers up here too, and maybe change that. So that's just a by the by, the, the project looks good and I appreciate the way you've tried to, uh, make the monies that you have work and duplicate, you know, working with the other, um, activities going on in that area, so. But just the website maybe.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions for staff, Ms. Sol?
I really appreciate, um, that downtown is my oasis, I had some friends visiting from Lansing and that whole area, we were down at the Windmill, at the Windmill Island and then we went to the back. Um, I happened to walk through it one evening and, um, Hope College students, or Hope College casa was there. And I was like, they were playing, so they were playing soccer, they were with their instructor, but it was just a little safe haven and I'm like, wow. And, um, my granddaughter, I take her down to the playscape and, um, it's just, it's just a nice area and I like what you said that, you know, it's for the residents. Because, yeah, I've hea- I've heard that, you know, downtown's for, and I used to say that too and, um, I, I'm, you know, taking it back. So I appreciate that, that, um, value and that, you know, desire to bring it closer to our residents, so we're not having to go all the way to the north side or that so far, so, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Great, thank you Garrett, appreciate it. What is the pleasure of counsel in regard to the Riverview Park addition, pavil- or pavilion addition?
Moved to approve their presentation.
Moved by Vreeman, is there support?
Support.
Support by Sol, any discussion? Seeing none, Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Corbin? Sol?
Yes.
Arnsouris?
Yes.
Hookstra?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great, thank you, next item on our agenda, twelve E six point one gifts, Kathy, would you please review the gifts for us?
The city manager's office is pleased to report the following gifts. Community and Neighborhood Services Department, National Night Out Event held on August one, twenty twenty-three. Ten percent of proceeds from National Night Out sales, Spice Boys, one hundred and eighty-eight dollars and eighty-seven cents. Cooking for Comfort, one hundred and twenty dollars. Parks and Recreation Department, Bowls Pool, Bowls Family and Russ's Commonsary, five hundred dollars. Department of Public Safety Services, Harbor Humane Society. Donations collected from the twenty twenty-three Battle of the Badges Charity Softball Game held in August in the amount of six thousand, seven hundred dollars. K-9 Program, donations collected from the twenty twenty-three K-9 Golf Outing Fundraiser Event held on June thirty, twenty twenty-three. Thirty-two thousand, two hundred and fourteen dollars and eighteen cents. Donations, sixty-one thousand, two hundred and two dollars, expenses, twenty-seven thousand, eight hundred and ninety-seven dollars and eighty-two cents. In-kind donation, a family membership for three months received from MVP Sports Club valued at six hundred and seventy-five dollars. Holland Energy Fund, drafts for drafts fundraiser, Waverly Stone Gastropub, one hundred dollars. It is recommended that these donations be accepted with appreciation, credited to the appropriate account and an expression of gratitude be forwarded to said donors.
Great, thank you Kathy, what is the pleasure of counsel in regard to the gifts?
Moved to approve with the token of our appreciation.
Moved by Sol, is there support?
Support.
Support by Aaron's force?
I'm missing something on my microphone.
Any discussion? We, we asked staff to make sure that we've got the little covers for our microphones in the future, so we don't hurt, hurt people. Mr. Vreeman was nice enough to share his with me. Any discussion from counsel in regard to the gifts? Moved, seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side, motion carries. Uh, next item on the agenda, item twelve E six point two, extend and renegotiate a contract with Venue Works for the management of the Holland Civic Center Place, Mr. Van Beek?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council, um, you all are very well, very well aware, um, you, um, we've had two study sessions, um, more largely on this topic. Um, what I tried to do in this, um, action request, um, lot of meaningful and helpful conversation about visions of the Civic Center and different things. We really now are at the point where you have two options in front of you. And we just need your direction on which, what and how you'd like to pursue the situation where we do have a contract that expires as of June thirty of twenty twenty-four. Um, and the two options that you have in front of you, uh, this doesn't happen often, but that's fine. You have a recommendation from the Civic Center Place outlined in minutes with votes and how that all happened. That, um, reads in the s- the motion recommendation, which that city staff would renegotiate contract mo- modifications. And obtain a two-year extension of the contract for what Venue Works, um, for the management of the Holland Civic Center Place. What I tried to do is outline in the action request form that really from a purchasing policy procedure, that would really be pursuing a contract with a sole source vendor. Um, using purchasing language. Um, we did, um, have the discussion at study session, so I made sure to, um, talk with our purchasing director, refer to our, um, purchasing ordinance. And also, um, talk to, um, city attorney. Um, you do have absolutely the ability at your vote and at your direction to direct me to do that. We did though, um, I'm not recommending that just officially to let you know, um, that, that's not a commentary on that I won't do whatever you direct me to do or anything like that. It's just, um, our purchasing policy and practice and, and best practice. Um, really, when you don't have the ability to extend a current contract with an existing contract, is that you would do an RFP and then that would be the process to, um, negotiate or renegotiate a deal. Um, so those are the two options before you, um, and really we're just looking for your direction to pursue one of those two options. Um, as we do need to pursue having a management company, um, that would, uh, run the, that portion of the Civic Center effective July one of next year. Um, we would like to pursue and get going on this, um, because for booking events and the like, um, really the sooner that everybody knows. Who's in charge of that and then could prepare for events July one and following, I think that's in everyone's best interest to do that. So happy to answer any questions, um, there is certainly a lot of other information in your packet, but from my perspective at least, you really have one of two options. Um, either to, um, direct staff, me, to renegotiate, um, an extension of the current contract with a sole source vendor. Or to do an RFP, open to everyone. vendor, or to do an RFP, open to everyone, including the current vendor, and then upon successful choice of the vendor, then we would negotiate a specific contract with the successful bidder of that RFP. And that's all I have, thank you.
Great, thank you. Questions for staff? Mr. Peters?
I'm really sorry I missed the last study session on this subject, but it was a thirty-two year event that I've never missed, and I just couldn't do it. One of the things I've heard a couple of times is in, in these meetings and talking to other people about, this is the only facility we don't operate. Help me understand the significance of that. Is that a good thing, a bad thing, is there, what does that mean when we say, why are we bringing that up, like, well, this is the only facility we don't operate, what does that mean? Yeah?
So, I'm recollecting, I don't believe I said, I don't believe I said in the last study session that this is the only venue we don't operate. We've had different experiences in time with operating a venue directly or a portion of the venue, and there's good, bad, and other that come to it, I think overall, I'll just speak for myself, we are not eager, we, staff or an extension of staff, are not eager to operate booking entertainment events or catering or those types of things, so that's not what was said. What I did say at the last meeting and possibly the one before, is quite frankly, from a charter perspective, from a management perspective, staff on your behalf and through the city manager, and when I say city manager, not Keith Van Beek, I'm talking about the role of city manager, and then for events like we had tonight, I entrust staff to carry out those duties, we carry out the management of contracts. I'm not aware of, and could not, and still cannot think of, a contract that staff doesn't really on your behalf manage a contract. So that was the statement that was made last time. Typically, when the city enters into a contract, and that's what we have here, the existing contract, is a contract with the city, staff has a very active role and is really mandated to manage that contract. So that was a discussion that we had at, at study session last time, I don't think there was any, and I don't want to put words in anyone's mouth, that was the discussion, I don't think there was any debate, and quite frankly, there was an understanding, I think, of no matter what of the two options you choose tonight, staff would negotiate a contract, and then we would have an active role in managing that contract moving forward.
Good, thank you. So, if I'm, if I'm hearing you correct, by the end of this year, we want to have an RFP written, and maybe even have a, another, some firm, could be Venue Works, could be, could be them, but we want to have that done in about four months period of time.
Yep, and act, and not assuming the outcome of your vote tonight, I think it's, it's best for everyone involved that we would use whatever process that you elect to have me pursue at this point. I think it's in everyone's best interest to get that done as soon as possible, so that we have that decision made, and that we have a firm that's looking out seven months, six months, five months, four months to be booking events.
Well, I, I get it. Well, when I read the action request, the Holland, the Civic Center Board, it was three to two, the three people that voted to secure the contract all are really the only three that have food, hospitality, venue-type experience. So that, that just strikes me as something. But your words here, it would appear from the minutes from the HCC Board and discussions by council at the study session, that there's been further clarification and agreement on the vision for the use of the HCCP. Those discussions will likely continue and demonstrate the continuing role for the Board, the liaison to council, the clarified role of city staff, the need for an updated, improved data, evaluate, better evaluation of the management contract, but also other uses for the HCC in being able for serving the community. So, it struck me of the one meeting I attended and the minutes from the other and talking to some folks who were in the room, that I, I thought I heard we have a lot of work to do there. We as a board, I think, it seems to me, need to understand what is this building to us and what do we want it to do? So, the other document we have that was prepared for these discussions says the primary item for discussion is to clarify and define a clear expectation of the use of the HCC through the Board of the Civic Center, from council to the Board, the management company, the community, and city staff. Specifically, this would involve defining as best possible the right balance between the original vision statement, being a place where residents are welcome, and serving as many purposes and people rather than being dedicated to one use and being financially successful to the point of either offsetting or eliminating a subsidy. So, that, this is saying to me that we have some work to do, and we got to figure a lot of things out. What I'm hearing you say is we're going to put together a document for an RFP and do all this stuff, and suggest to another firm to come in here with basically what we have right now, and see if you can maybe improve on the performance of our Civic Center that we have right now, and that's a reasonable thing to do, don't get me wrong, but where's all this work going to happen? When is this going to happen? When is council going to get their hands around what we're talking about here? And I don't, I heard loud and clear that we don't really, I've heard people, we don't really know how it operates, we're not well informed about this stuff, but yet all of a sudden we have a recommendation to not listen to the Civic Center Board, and with very little information, say we want to do this, and I, if there's good rationale for it, man, I'm, I'm all down for it. Now, you talk about standard expectations, I suspect in here, this may suggest something that maybe there's an issue. Venue Works is in charge of specifications and completion of these improvements, including but not limited to generating sponsorship revenue to pay for the installation of an exterior marquee sign, but also to create an important revenue stream for the Civic Center. The marquee sign placement is now further complicated by the fact that the unified development ordinance has since been modified and limits the types of marquee signs available to the downtown zoning district. I think we have a little ownership in making that difficult. Is that overstated?
I don't know if you want to-
Who should I be talking to? Who knows most about what we're talking about right now?
Well, you said a lot, do you want me to go back to earlier things that you stated, or specifically on the marquee sign?
All I want to just say about, we talked a lot about the sign.
Mm-hmm. And we had that discussion at the study session.
There were a number of iterations of bringing a sign to the Board, was there not? He's on the Board.
Yeah, I, I can answer that question if you're, if you'd like me to.
Number of iterations, okay, that's good, I, I think it's great, but now this Udo thing comes along, and now we've really hampered their, their ability to create a sign going forward that will accommodate the kind of advertising that we're asking, that we're holding them accountable for, because what we're limiting them to is basically letters that have to be put up on a sign with a, with a suction cup. So, I just want to be fair, I just want to point a few things out.
Do you want, is there a question?
No, I'm just stating, I'm just talking.
All right.
Installation of lighting and sound equipment following the inclusion of the upgrade to the city budget, I don't know why that took so long, but the budget numbers that we have, and we can look at in a minute, suggest that all of the, the eight or nine Venue Works events that they were planned came with about a ten or fifteen thousand dollar addition, because we didn't have, we cut those things out of the Civic Center early on, when some of my colleagues said, we're not going to put any more money into the Civic Center, we're going to only do this many bonds, so we had to cut out some money. One of the things we cut out was some kitchen stuff, and one of the things we cut out was the installation of lights and sound, and those things, had we had those, I think the numbers could have been a little better. The budget upgrades provided by the city include rolled flooring to cover the gym floor, kitchen capabilities. Venue Works is responsible for the maintenance and clearing of the Civic Center, both external and, external and internal. The city provides regular preventative maintenance, expectations for regular, the regular and expected level of cleanliness and repair should be confirmed and monitored to the satisfaction comparable level of other city facilities. Do we have a problem with dirt not tidy, not clean, not maintained, do we have a problem?
We, we do, we do have regular complaints about that, so that's one thing that we'd like to address in the RFP without pointing fingers, and again, Jay, just because you've kind of asked questions, you kind of haven't, again, I would point out that really what's, what choice that you all have is really, we have the expiration of a contract effective June 30, so it's really just getting a new contract in place effective July one is, is what's before you today.
Yeah, I understand, but I want to make sure everybody's done a little bit of homework here to really understand what we got.
And I, and I can give you more information on things if you'd like, but-
No, I, I'll give you, I got some more information. The priorities we have, booking guidelines that we've approved, there's no blame here, I'm just trying to figure out where's, where does the rubber meet the road, what's the smartest thing to do for us right now? Our priorities are tulip time retains the use of the facility for the annual festival. There are some things that they pay, and that's probably a pretty good use of that facility, you'd have to agree. Holland Christian High School basketball is a priority usage, fabulous partner when we had, when we built the building, now they take up weekends and, you know, twenty, thirty-some practices in the building that are limited. Eight Street Market and Indoor Markets, those are the priority bookings that we've given to Venue Works to deal with, none of which are really big moneymakers. We prioritizing events that don't necessarily do a lot of, help us financially. I've heard bookings a lot about, is the community using the facility? We need the community to use the facility. I don't know if anybody looked at the documents that were given to us and gone through this and really looked through budgeted accounting principled numbers. There's just a list of some of the things. Quinceanera, business dinner, champion gymnastics, champion martial arts, wedding reception, wedding catering, Donovan Marine Show, Escape Ministries, another wedding, another open house, family open house, Hampton Class of 67, another wedding reception, Holland Christian 50th class reunion, Holland High Class of 71, Holland High Snow Coming, rehearsal dinner, another quinceanera, memorial service for a very good friend of mine, which was very well done, and we did a nice job of it. Reception, wedding reception, corporate holiday party, post-wedding brunch, quality Christmas party, memorial, rehearsal dinner, wedding, holiday party, ship-to-tour luncheons, another wedding, another holiday party, West Michigan, West Ottawa's Class of 50 Union, West Ottawa's 65 Class reunion, West Ottawa Prom, concert, Best of the Best Gala, boxing event, Boys and Girls Club, Holiday Light Exchange by the BPW, Comic Con Show, Community Foundation Luncheon. I'm about one-third of the way through that list that took place in the last year. Now, I don't know what constitutes a community event, but I did hear at the meeting I attended that we have to get the community in the facility. I would, I would bring your attention to one of those documents in your packet that would suggest that, man, there's a heck of a lot more going on there than you think. Now, when it comes to the budget, the final, the final numbers. First year, our opening, I don't know how many people were here, that was a disaster, and it cost a lot of money because we weren't ready, and we made promises, and we had to bring in the community, and it didn't go well, so, we did it, we learned, we don't do this all the time, we learned. The second year and third year is COVID, shut it down, not just, you know, put it on hold, but shut it down, no pipeline, no nothing. Fourth year, they, they exceeded their budget. Last year, their budget, their goal was six hundred and five thousand dollars, the budget that we approved for them was six hundred, six hundred and five thousand dollars. Their current actual for last fiscal year, just ending in June, was one million, oh seventy-four, two sixty-seven, ninety-two. Now, I'm not fast enough to know what the, what the percentage increase over what the budget we gave them and what they came up with, but it's got to be forty, thirty-five, forty, maybe forty percent. And, they knocked for the last two years, they've taken some money off from the dreaded contribution we have to make every year that no one wants to do, but they're starting to chip away on it. Let me ask you this, do you have any idea between now and the end of this fiscal year, what the pipeline for the Civic Center looks like? The events that are booked, the opportunities that are there that are already booked, let alone the pipeline they're continuing to fill? Do we have any idea what that looks like? That's a yes or no question, I guess.
Is this, you want me to answer that now? Is that, is that towards me?
I'm not done, I just want a quick answer, I mean, it's a simple question, what do we know about?
Well, there's been question, I'm not trying to be, I'm just making sure you want me to-
I just want my colleagues to hear what I'm saying, I guess, and I want to make sure from you, if I'm saying something that's inaccurate.
I think there have been certain things that I'd like to address that you said earlier that aren't, but-
I'm sure there will be others.
Mr. Peters, this opportunity for questions to staff.
I'm almost done.
Do you, do you have questions for staff? Because we can, we can have discussion after we have a motion.
I just asked a question. What is it, what do we know about what's in the pipeline now from Ju-, from January, June, was it July one through June 30? What's in the pipeline? What have they got planned? What does that pro forma look like? How far ahead are they toward the numbers that they got? Next year's budget is they've got a nine mil, nine hundred thousand dollar goal, instead of six, they want a three hundred thousand dollar. Again, COVID, I've heard a comment say, well, COVID's over. COVID shut the place down for two years. I've heard some people say, oh, I've had a bad lunch, well, so does Tavern on the Green once in a while. I think these people have gone above and beyond, I haven't mentioned anything about the two hundred and some odd doll, two hundred thousand plus dollars that they arranged for us to get from COVID money? Can talk about that. So, here's what I'm, here's, I'm not, I would not support your recommendation, but I would support, let's just extend the contract for two years, give us an opportunity to do our job and figure out what is the Civic Center, what direction we want to go in. If you don't, if you want to go in a direction of more community things and reduce the budget on food and beverage budget, food and beverage is seventy percent of what we do there, so, you want to- So you want to talk about, well, let's do some more rec, okay?
Again, Mr. Peters, I'm going to ask you, do you have a question for staff? We do not have a motion on the floor.
I'll just make one more comment. In all of this stuff, I've never heard anybody talk about Howland Civic Center Place being the best event venue in 2022. Do we even know that? All the things we celebrate, all the things, I guess, is there a reason why? Oh, it's a question. Is there a reason why we haven't bothered to recognize these people for the work they've done? Just let us do, I don't know how, okay. Yeah, I'll make another comment once you, if anybody else has any questions.
Does anyone have questions for staff? Mr. Hookstra, questions for staff?
Yeah, I have a question. And hopefully this won't sound too rhetorical, but talking about an RFP, RFP, the structure of an RFP. If, if we were to go that route and you were directed to create an RFP, without going line by line, I don't want to know all of that, but what are the major points or major things that would be included in an RFP that would go out? Like the basic stuff that someone who might be interested in that would look at, try to make a determination, what's included in an RFP?
Sure. What, the starting point, right, would be the RFP that we utilized the first time around. And actually, we had a very nice conversation, I thought, last time. And council talked about some things that I heard unanimous agreement on some things that you wanted to tweak moving forward. And that it's not either or, but in an effort to do more things where the building would be open in certain circumstances right now where it's not open. For example, Farmer's Market, for example, if something's not scheduled event wise out there, that then that would be a night where instead of it being closed, we could have recreation programming. And that that's not an either or situation. It's just working with whoever manages it to make sure that we set up a system to achieve what you, I heard unanimous agreement last time on that's something that you wanted to achieve. So that's, that's an example of something in the RFP where we would beef up basically the expectation, and I think one of the key things is the responsibility. I think there has been some misunderstanding, and we talked about this last time also, where I think from our perspective, I'll use the example, and there were multiple ones that we talked about last time, where if there is a night, for example, where recreation programming could be in the Civic Center, that was a communicated value of all of you last time, that doesn't take away from a potential booked event because there wasn't anything scheduled there anyway. Usually if something's scheduled for an event, it's out there for a period of time. So if you have an open night, we could have recreation programming in there. One of the things in the RFP is RFP or a renegotiation of contract, because again, those are the two things available for you. Either way, right, we'd either negotiate in a contract or we do an RFP that would outline, from our perspective, we wouldn't need the management company to be in there a night that we have recreation staff in there doing recreation programming. Because that's paying a company or expecting them to incur cost for something where it's our building. We, we can manage the building that night. So that is one of a handful of types of examples where depending on your direction and your vote tonight, we don't have a contract in place. And in fact, the motion of the, of the Civic Center Place is actually to renegotiate a new contract. So we'd either renegotiate a new contract with that as an example, or we'd do an RFP that basically would outline a little bit more what isn't in place right now and wasn't in the original RFP to sketch out what's a responsibility of the management company and what's a responsibility of the city, and then how we would work that out together. And what an RFP does is it, it tries not to be overly prescriptive, but it raises an issue. And then we ask the responders to say, and theoretically, right, they're experts in this field. Then they would give their general response of how they would approach that issue. And then with a successful bidder, then you'd negotiate that into an actual term of a contract. So there's an example, and hopefully that answers your question.
Yeah, just to make sure I'm hearing you correctly, it's, the potential renegotiation of the contract, then if I get this right, would, that would, the meaning of that would be fleshing out some of these things that are a little ambiguous or non-existent now, like if you can slide in a recreation activity, if there's no booking, where there seems to, I guess, right now, be a little question of whether that can be done. Those sorts of unknowns.
And who's managing the building that night? Like, like, I think from our perspective, we'd say, we have the keys. It's our, we, we can use the building that night, right? And you don't have to be there. So that's just one example. I could give others, but.
Does that come from, do you think, from having this period of experience and a little bit more knowledge of how things work, that now we're seeing and being able to identify this, this, and this, we should be dealing with this where we didn't necessarily see that with the initial RFP?
Oh, absolutely. And I, and, and we've said that, right? So I think we've learned things. I said, I said, was it last week or was it two weeks ago? Whatever, last time we had the last study session, I said too, we normally wouldn't do this, but if we would do an RFP, I'd actually meet with certainly Civic Center Place Board and the management company right now. Usually you wouldn't work with a management company to write an RFP, right? But I think in this instance, to just identify some things of, hey, where, where has there been lack of clarity? Either in the original RFP or at the current management contract, that would be helpful to flesh that out to better. Any good contract has good understanding of responsibilities. That's all we're trying to get here. Because we don't have a contract July 1 of next year.
Last one, last one. I have other comments at an appropriate spot, but I'll save that for later.
I appreciate that, Mr. Hookstra, thank you.
Yeah, I hear you. Shoot, no, I forgot what I was going to say.
You can ask me later, too.
Okay, I'll think of it later.
All right.
Any other questions for staff members? Mr. Corbin?
Kind of a comment first, but I gotta get my mic here, and then some questions. But I just, you know, find it slightly insulting to suggest that we haven't reviewed the data. We have reviewed the data. To be, to be honest with you, this wasn't given to me about two weeks prior or two weeks ago. And I've been asking for information from the Howland Civic Center Place Board for a couple of years. And I bet you probably don't even have this information right now. Maybe some of it, some, some, so it's kind of insulting to you to suggest. But, you know, I'm used to, it's common practice with one of my colleagues to do that routinely. But more importantly is projections. I haven't seen projections, no. I agree, I have not seen projections because they haven't been provided to us. So I'm going to be honest with you, no, I haven't seen projections. So. No, because I'm not really directing questions to you, I'm just looking at you. So stand by. So then, you know, questions came up. Apparently there wasn't an opportunity for staff to answer it, but things like kitchen stuff. Well, unfortunately, the council before me, before I took office, decided, you know, how much they were going to invest in the building. And yeah, I agree with you, they probably did cut back the building. But once that was recognized shortly after, kitchen stuff was purchased. Allocations was provided, and it was provided to the facility. Lighting stuff the same way. We put money aside to provide for lighting, and guess what? We had to use it for operational expenses.
Mr. Corbin, do you have a question for staff?
Yeah, I just want to make sure. That's the two things, and then the third, and then they'll send it back as a question, okay? So the other one was a sign, right? And that Udo somehow prohibited us from putting a sign up. Well, we had that agreement long before Udo took place, and the sign didn't get put in place, the one that apparently they wanted. So the question to staff is, am I correct in saying that we provided, and I'll direct this to Matt Van Dyken because he is on the Civic Center Place Board, and he does help with management of the facility. But he's, he's not a voting member, okay? Not a voting member, let me take, you know. Was kitchen stuff, the kitchen materials that were provided, was that provided to the Civic Center?
Yes, it was, and part of that was through a grant from Venue Works.
How about the lighting and?
Yep, the lighting, the PO was issued. We received the specifications from Venue Works about two and a half months ago that went out to bid, that PO was issued, and that is currently in process.
And the sign requirement, right, was obviously before, before Udo was passed, correct?
That was part of the original contract.
So, you know, I, I get it, and I appreciate your, we're not here to defend the company, so to speak. What I'm just saying is, I want to make sure that the listening public understands that we have addressed some of these questions, and I'm asking them again just to affirm that these things have been addressed. So just, that's for the point of order. And I guess the only question I have back to my colleague, the only question, can I add? Can I address colleague or staff?
I would, this is to staff at this moment, please wait until we have a motion on the floor to have discussion.
And that's my point, is I don't know, do we have a motion on the floor or not?
We do not have a motion on the floor. Any other questions for staff?
I have one.
Yes, Ms. Sol.
So in this motion that was by the board right now that it stands, the Howland Civic Center Place Board recommends that the city staff renegotiate contract modifications and obtain a two-year extension of the contract with Venue Works for the management of Howland Civic Center. That being said, so then we could renegotiate some of the things that weren't, that we now have more clarity on, is that some of those items can be on this new renegotiation? Is that my understanding?
Yes, I'll answer it this way, Belinda, if it's okay. You have two options in front of you as counsel. Either to negotiate, and I'm going to, it says renegotiate because that was the wording of the Civic Center Place Board, which is fine, I'm not attacking that. Really, it's negotiate a new contract that would take effect July 1 of next year. The reason that you have a different recommendation from me is not so much a value laden judgment or anything like that. It's our purchasing policy outlines that that would not be the process that we would use. So that's why I did not recommend that. Whatever you all decide and direct me to do, staff will do. Either way, we'll have new negotiation terms in place that outlines the discussion that we've had in two lengthy study sessions at this point, that I've heard a large degree of alignment in some things that need to be clarified and addressed. And I, I and staff feel comfortable that we have a good idea of the things that understandably, after a period of something new, that we have some things that would be good to just get clarification on those things. Does that answer your question, Belinda?
It does, so, so, thank you. So it does mean that because it's in front of us, we can just, I mean, I know that's not the procedure, but we can, as city council, vote, as it says here, to renegotiate. And once we renegotiate and every, if whoever, whatever we vote, the outcome would be, yes, the staff can do that, renegotiate per the terms here to, with those stipulations of more access, you know, when they're not using it and whatnot, the ones that we discussed at our study session and have been mentioned.
Two, two things, I guess, Belinda, not trying to overstep, right? From my perspective, either way, right, there are things that were that staff managing and all this contract and getting one in place first of all, and then managing it moving forward. We have a, a list of things that from many different people that we think would be good to clarify and put in a contract moving forward, no matter what. And in my mind, the way my mind works is that's going to occur no matter what decision you make tonight. The, the decision really is just negotiating a contract with a sole provider, which, as I've said, legally you can direct us to do. You have the power as council to do that. Or to do an RFP process as the purchasing policy otherwise would, we'd, we'd follow. But again, like, you have, you have the ability to give me direction either way. So Belinda, I see them as two separate issues. The what's in the contract, we're going to do our best, best job, right? And we're going to bring that contract forward to you. And then you can dig into that contract or approve that contract or alter that contract at that point. But we're going to, we're going to achieve that, in my opinion, either way. The question is just what process do you use to get that contract?
Thank you. So to me, from what I hear, what is said, that we have learned some things. And on the recommendation from the Civic Board, it sounds like they think we should. And they, the board, have been managing. And yes, there's been some growing pains, things that we need to improve in or request from our vendor. That's the word, vendor, or Venue Works manager?
Venue Works is the name of the company that has the current contract, vendor.
Vendor, okay, vendor.
We understand what you're saying.
Okay, so I just wanted to make sure I'm using the correct terminology. But it seems prudent to me that this motion by the board is something that I would pursue because of the time and because we've learned some things and from both standpoints, them, COVID, us, what we want for our constituents, you know, to get more use, managing and whatnot. So I don't know, to me, it's like kill two birds with one stone. It's right here in front of us. So in my opinion, I would motion that we, I'd take this motion and approve it if that's acceptable to my colleagues.
Are you putting that in the form of a motion right now?
Yes, I am.
So we have a motion to, if I understood you correctly, accept the recommendation of the Civic Center Place Board to renegotiate the contract with Venue Works?
Correct.
Support. Got a motion, we've got support, discussion.
I still have a question for staff, can I?
Go ahead.
So two years from now, based on what you're, you've been describing to us.
Lynn, could you speak into your microphone?
Yes. You're new. So two years from now, based on what you've been telling us about process and protocol, you would likely recommend an RFP process. If we were to agree to this motion, extend this contract for two years, we would not negotiate a new contract in two years. We would do an RFP at that point.
Here's the way that I would answer that. Right now, the recommended motion was just to do, and it's been a little unclear, right? Because they said extend the current contract two years, which to me, and I might be getting into details here, but it's like, that would say, take the current term and extend it two years, right? But then there was an additional motion that said renegotiate the contract. Now, we can work our way through that, right? But those actually are slightly contradictory because you can't extend a contract with current terms, but renegotiate those terms. So actually, what I'd be looking for from all of you, or you'd entrust us to do that, right, is whenever we negotiate a contract, one of the things we evaluate is if it's with a service provider in particular. Quite often what we'll do, and what we had in fact in the original agreement with Venue Works, that came out in the amended agreement, because we negotiated it out, actually. And we did that, remember, because we extended the initial term. So then we took out the automatic renewal term. And we did that, remember, because we extended the initial term, so then we took out the automatic renewal term. I remember those conversations, and I remember, actually, that we did that, because periodically, no matter what service you have, you try to go out and rebid that out periodically, no matter what. Now, a lot of times in the agreements, we'll have automatic renewal. You might have a two-year term, you might have a three-year term, and you might say, hey, we're gonna, we have the, the ability by agreement of the two parties to extend that for one or two terms. But as outlined in the material in the, in the agenda packet, no matter what, periodically, it is best practice to open that up for other bidders. Um, and we do that regularly with services, and we provided you an outline of those types of things that we do. That's just what I'd call best practice. Because I think it helps with clarification, I think it helps that you're getting the best value. And even though it is a very common practice for us, that we actually do an RFP and we land with the bidder that we had before, it just, in the business, you say, it helps everybody sharpen the pencil and make sure that you're back at the table and talking those things through. A long way to answer, Lynn, if we would just direct-negotiate with a sole vendor, I don't know if two years is the right amount, or even in, depending on the choice that you make tonight, like, how long of a contract would you want us to negotiate? No matter what, we're probably getting to the point where it, it would be best practice to just make that available in, in the form of an RFP at some point. Um, I think Lynn outlined, you know, eight, every eight to 12 years is, is kind of a, best practice that's recommended. You have the ability to direct us to do whatever you want.
Okay, we have a motion, and a, and a, and a second on the floor, is there discussion on the motion?
Can I get clarity?
Mr. Freeman.
Of, the motion is to, say it again.
My understanding is, the motion is to accept the recommendation of the Holland Civic Center Place Board that city staff renegotiate a con, renegotiate contract modifications and obtain a two-year extension of the contract with VenueWorks for the management of the Holland Civic Center Place. Is that an accurate representation of your motion? And is that what you understand you support? So, it's, it's the, it's the language that is in the suggested caption, motion, recommendation on the staff report. Okay, Mr. Corbin.
All right, I remember to turn my mic on this time. So, for me, there's a difference between renegotiating a contract, the terms of a contract, there's give and take by both parties. Whereas, an RP states specifically what we want as a council to see a contract or a, a vendor or contractor do with that facility. We've learned a lot, it's been mentioned here tonight, we've learned a lot. And I think that can be applied to an RFP process, and it could be included, so we get the best outcome for our community. It was even stated here, what is the smartest thing to do, quote unquote? I think the smartest thing to do is to really get the best for the community by, through a competitive bid process. And that's what we're speaking about here, through an RFP, is what we typically done, with some exceptions, I agree. And Mr. Hookstrow will probably mention that sometime this evening, and we talked about that. And we can get clarity from staff why that decision was made. However, it's a competitive bid process, it's what surrounding communities do, um, in, uh, not only in Holland, but surrounding communities do around us. And I don't see why we shouldn't do the same, to get the best outcome for our community. So, in that, from that perspective, my perspective, I respect your motion, but I will be voting against the motion that's on deck.
Ms. Terrence Hurst.
Thank you. Yes, and it's only mildly awkward to speak about the VenueWorks contract when Chris is in the audience, who has managed it, and we have a relationship with him over these past few years. So, uh, in addition, human nature, we don't like change. But we have a purchasing ordinance policy in place, and I think it is in our best interest, just like you would do, you would renegotiate, you would look at, your, your insurance is up for a new contract, you look at different insurance companies every year, often you go back to the one you have. And indeed, VenueWorks won the last, I'm assuming it was an RFP, in 18. And they may again, but if you don't look around and see what's available, it's a different world, there are different companies, young and hungry, or something that we know and it's established, and we can work with. I, I would also vote against your motion, because I do feel we owe it to ourselves to find the best value, the best outfit that's out there. And, um, we have that kind of policy already in place, even though, yes, it's not, you know, always followed. But in this case, there's a financial commitment involved, there's a community involvement, and it, it speaks to what we, we value in our community.
Mr. Peters, Mr. Freeman, and then Mr. Byrd, in that order, please.
I guess I've been sitting here a while. Do we think, this is, this is not a rhetorical question. The track that we're, current people are on is impressive. And best practices aren't always not taking the advice of one of our esteemed committees, who know more about it than we do, and just say, we're not gonna do that, and have very, very little to go on, as far as really why. Other than, we have a policy, apparently, that says we should, we could be fiscally better off if we did that. I don't know what that means. It sounds like, if we wanted, if we want to renegotiate, I don't think there's anything, we're gonna violate any policy by doing what we want to do. After all, we're terminating the contract early, if we do, if we do this. Or, if, there's a chance we would, no, we're not, you're absolutely right. But, here's my, here's my biggest point. Do you think, with the track that they are, and these things, you don't, you don't just start it open, like, open up a restaurant and be really successful. These things take months and months to lay the groundwork, to get it successful, to do these things. Now, we do an RFP, we find someone else, let's say we do. The learning curve, the learning curve of this unique community, in that unique facility, do we think in the first year of that contract, they're gonna do a million dollars? They're gonna do better than what these guys have done last year, and what they're likely to do this year? It's not like they're sliding. I guess that's my biggest frustration is, we want to talk about, one of the things in the manager's report is it's fiscally responsible to do this. I think it's fiscally irresponsible to change horses right now, when it's going in the right direction. And I'll go back to say one more thing, it's our job to tell them what we want to see in that building. When are we gonna do that? We're gonna have an RFP out in three months, and have a new firm here. When, when are we gonna do that? Now, I heard something say, do we want more people in the building, we think we want to have it open more often, okay. I have a lot of questions about that, because that's gonna affect the bottom line. Food and beverage is what drives the profit. So, if we want to go in a direction of more recreation, open the building up for more community events that are, that, I, I don't know why we would come, really, but if we want to do that, then get used to that subsidy. Because the only way that's going down is with the track record that's now been established and headed in the right direction. So, again, I think the idea of renegotiating with the people who got us here right now, under extraordinarily difficult situation. They've got 50 of these things around the country, they bring all kinds of resources, I don't know what the problem, it's clear there's issues here that have not been brought to our attention, I don't know what they are. If they're personality things, work it out. If there's other thing, the building's dirty, work with them, fix it. But to carte blanche, change horses in the middle of this stream right now, is, I think, is fiscally irresponsible. So, that's my, that's all I'm gonna say about that.
Mr. Freeman.
Um, I think, Jay, some of the things that you've said have helped bring even clarity to my own thinking of, and landing further into the decision to enter an RFP, an RFP process. And it's not a reprimand on VenueWorks. But it's a good clarifying, for us, as you've identified, what we need that facility to do and perform for us as a city. And so, I think we've come even more clear of what we're needing and wanting out of that facility, its management. And I think, in addition to that, if we're in an RFP process, VenueWorks is in the best position to participate in that and hit those same targets that we're putting out for them. And so, I think it's in our community's best interest to look at the broader picture. Sitting on that board, as not a voting member, but a participant, I think we're, this group, I have more, I more, um, there's more opinion, a broader perspective, that's brought to even that Civic Center Board, from this group, that sees the broader use of that facility. And so, by doing an RFP, I think we're gonna get more use out of that building, whether it be with the current provider or a new one. And the current provider is in the best position to bring themselves to the table to do that. So, I'm not advocating for a change, I'm reinforcing us as the leadership of this community to utilize that facility for the best of our community, because we've clarified that in the current use, non-use, whatever determiner you want to say it, over the last five years, I think we've gotten a better understanding of it, and what it can do. And so, I would be voting against the current, and asking for it to do a full RFP.
Mr. Byrd.
Yes, I'll just start right out of the gate, I will also be voting against that, and some of the reasons why. You know, we, first of all, I'm a, I'm a process-driven guy. We have had, we have not, as a group, followed processes before, or it was perceived we have not followed processes before. Every time, those did not go unwarranted, there was someone who had always spoke about that. So, for us to now just decide we are going to deviate from the process because of this or that, does not, it doesn't make sense, and it doesn't coincide with past actions. I also believe, in some of the things that have been spoken, I'm just actually repeating them. I really believe VenueWorks is in a, I would say, in my opinion, a huge advantage in the RFP process, or in this whole process, because they have access to be able to help with the RFP. And we mentioned Chris as well. I believe also, him being a citizen of this community, even adds another layer that puts them at a higher advantage to be able to do this. I believe those things, I'll, I'll just leave it at that. I, I believe VenueWorks will be able to do things that, and give information, and, as Keith had mentioned, help write this RFP. So, that's, that's six years, I'm sorry, what is it, six years or five years? Five years of experience that they have, that they can bring to the table and help with this. And I, they're in the form of doing business, so the input that they would give would be to their advantage, right? It would be to their advantage to be able to solidify their position as being the best. I would expect nothing less than that. They want it, is what I would assume. And so, with that desire, with that experience, and with the knowing of the community, already, already, on a hundred-yard dash, they're at 50 yards. So, and then again, we have to follow our processes, we can't just pick and choose, and, 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 and this goes back to the phrase, we're almost good, right? And you guys know what I'm talking about. When we start doing things like that, the perception of council is, I won't say it is, it can be construed to, can we trust them? They're not going to follow what they have legislated as a procedure, or a policy, or a directive. And if we start doing those types of things, us being almost good will put us in a position of not so good. And I am not willing, while I'm on council, to have that.
Mr. Corbin asked for a quick clarification, then Ms. Soul, then Ms. Raymond.
Yeah, just a quick clarification, what, something that Mr. Byrd had said, I know, need council, or city manager to clarify. The VenueWorks will not participate in writing the RFP, that is, gonna be city staff doing that. They may have an advantage of knowing how this facility operates, and competitively can bid on the project, on their RFP, but they're not going to help write the RFP, is that correct?
Yeah, what I would say, actually, Scott, and I mentioned this in the study session, I mentioned it earlier tonight. We will not ask them to help us write, or they won't write the RFP. But I think in this instance, and it's not unheard of, I actually, um, if you direct me to write an RFP, me, extended staff, I would sit down with VenueWorks and say, what things do you know from other locations, what things have you learned in the last five years? In the spirit of making sure, what are potential issues that are unclear, that could be clarified, that we really should ask for a response, or give some direction in the RFP? So, no, they won't write it, Scott, but I think this is, and it's not unheard of, this would actually be a very specific instance, where I would want to have VenueWorks give us their perspective, so we can write the most effective RFP possible, thank you.
Ms. Soul, and then Ms. Raymond.
So, I really appreciate my colleagues, and I'm still gonna respectfully disagree with, um, I still think it's to our advantage because of time, and for a couple of different reasons. VenueWorks didn't have a good go because of COVID, and they have definitely come around. And I, I appreciate what Quincy said, and what, um, um, my colleagues, Freeman, and Corbin, and Aron Hurst, Aron Hurst, yeah, that has said, I apologize, Nikki. Um, but, I think, you know, I think someone had said about process, I think, refresh my memory, if it serves me correctly, when we renewed the city prosecutors, or the city attorneys' contract, we just kind of voted on it, we didn't really.
I can answer that, if you'd like. Yeah, so, so, I know that's been referenced a few times. We have, I don't know how many decades that we've had, we have, we have a contract. And like I mentioned earlier, periodically, those contracts, we write it in such a way where every time it's up, we don't necessarily do an RFP, we have the ability to extend the current contract. And that's what we did with the city attorney's contract. And when that was brought up, it was basically, um, you know, right at the, right at the, towards the end of the extension, so there wasn't time to do an RFP to get that in place. And I said, if you want us to do an RFP in the future for that, we'd be more than happy to do that. So, that's what hap, that's what happened there. Additionally, I'll say, the city attorney contract historically, not only in char- Additionally, I'll say the city attorney contract historically, not only in charter, but also in, in what I'll call municipal practice, right, as, as a city manager, is a different type of professional service in, in that the depth of knowledge and the decades of information that they have. It's not very often that you change horses. Maybe a bad metaphor. But if council would want us to do an RFP, we absolutely would and could do an RFP for those services, just like any other service.
So in the beginning you said because, can you rephrase that again? So I can get what you said about because of the city pro, city attorney, I apologize. In the beginning, what you said in the beginning, I'm sorry, just.
Yeah, so, so what happens is when you have a long-time provider and you have a contract in place, typically those have clauses or those have understanding in, in place. Like I said, that, I'm going to use an example. Maybe you have a three-year contract, but that contract that you approve specifically has in it the ability to extend that contract for additional one, two, or three, three-year terms. And that's something that is very common that we put in a lot of our contracts. And as your city manager, that's one thing, I, I always go by what the law says and then I go by what the contract says. And in this case, this has nothing to do with this VenueWorks good or bad. This, from my perspective, this has to do with, there's a contract in place that doesn't allow for an extension. So then the recommendation for me would be to do an RFP. Thus the discussion and ultimately the vote you're going to take tonight of do an RFP and you'd have the competitive process there, or renegotiate with a, with a sole provider. And then we really won't have that competitive advantage to lead into that negotiation, but we can do it. Does that answer your question?
It does.
Councilman?
Yes, yes, thank you. But it does say we have the ability to extend, but in this point, we would, we have the ability to renegotiate, you're saying.
Yeah.
That is.
I, I would say regardless of the motion from the Civic Center, you don't have a contract to extend. And in fact, they don't want us to extend the contract. They want us to negotiate a new contract.
Okay.
And if you direct me to do that, I'm happy to do that on your behalf.
So renegotiate is aimed at reaching an agreement. So for me, you know, against what my colleagues may have said, it's, it's a relational, it's a relationship principle for me. They've been with us through COVID. And COVID was no one's fault and this is not about good or bad. I think someone had referenced, you can go to your favorite place and they got a new waitress, a new waiter, a new cook, and you're going to have bad service. You know, you come to my house, my house is not always spotless, you know, for the record. It's lived in, it's lived in. So I'm just saying that to me, and it goes against nothing about, I think what my colleague Byrd said about, you know, I'm not going to start now because we all know sitting in these chairs, you can do everything to the T and people are still accusing you of one thing or another. I mean, you know, that's, so that's nothing that we can do about. But to me, it seems prudent, relationship-wise, that VenueWorks has turned around, had a bad start, like everyone else with the COVID, we were all on lockdown. And to me, it just seems relationship. I think that the value in that, you know, and the value in the board, Mike presented and his colleague, and they were like, you know, hey, this is the board. And, and that is a recommendation that I would like to follow. And I, I, I understand that we have policy, I understand that. And I understand that venues is probably, has advent, advantage. But at the same time, I think that, you know, like Jay said, you know, why switch horses now and, 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 you know, but that's me. And everyone is free, no hard feelings, we can agree to disagree. But I appreciate you helping me understand where you all stood and why you would vote against it, but that doesn't change my motion. I still think it's the best thing for me and where I sit. So thanks.
Ms. Raymond.
Yeah, I don't have a ton to add here, except that I agree with everything everyone has said. Which is, which is a little bit of a problem, right? Because I think that, I think you've all made legitimate points. And so then it becomes, for me, what is the, what, what makes the most sense for us? And I, and what feels like to me is that a renegotiation of the contract or a negotiation of the contract is the expedient thing to do, as opposed to something we're going to do anyway at some point in the relatively near future. And so I think that it makes more sense to now issue an RFP that does not preclude VenueWorks. And I feel like that's been, that's, you know, clearly they can be a part of that process as, as others have mentioned already. But that seems to be, make the most sense, it seems to be the cleanest for me, that we would have established a, and a direction with, as you've said, input from all of us. And so a timeline on how you get, how we get, give that to you would be helpful, that we can use in the future and, and adjust as we need to in the future. So that's, that's why I would vote against the motion because I feel like that would be, I think, the most practical thing to do is to go with the, the RFP as opposed to the expedient thing.
Any other discussion by council?
Your honor.
Mr. Hookstra.
I haven't remembered what it was I was going to ask. But I have other stuff.
All right.
So.
Did, did you write them all down so you don't forget the last one?
I hope so.
Oh, good.
I can't read my writing very well though, but we'll see what we can do. There are a couple of things that kind of, about this issue, the whole discussion, that when I think about them, they kind of make me vibrate a little bit. Let me say first of all, that in theory, I'm not opposed at all to RFPs. I think that's, using them is a good process, a good tool, a good thing to do. We often do it. To Mr. Corbin's previous comment, I won't say how often we do it. But when I think of issuing RFP and doing that consistently, that, that speaks to me as a language of policy. And so I would think that issuing an RFP in instances like this is something that we would just sort of automatically do, naturally do, not think about it too much whether we want to do it or not. That's just what we do and we do it. I know that there are exceptions, there have been exceptions, there are often good reasons for making those exceptions. If history serves, any one that I can think of involved some special circumstances or something that caused us to believe that we didn't have to follow that process. Either the service we were getting was so specialized and so focused and so necessary that it would be imprudent to get someone else to come in to do it, or we were just comfortable with it, or, or any number of reasons. But it was a special circumstance that deviated us from what I consider a policy. So thinking about that, when I think about the situation that we're talking about now, there's a couple of things to consider. First of all, the COVID entered into the initial period of this contract, knocked two years out of an opportunity for our vendor to prove themselves, to show what they could do, to make good on promises and that sort of thing. In my previous business, oh, one other thing prior to that. Another thing to talk about is our expectations. And we've had conversations about a number of things like use in the building, what is the vision for the building? What are the revenue expectations and what does that look like? Are there percentages? Is there threshold? What do the metrics look like? All stuff that's kind of important to someone rendering service. Again, if, in my previous business, as a cabinet maker, if someone came to me and said, well, I'd like you to build this bunch of cabinets for me. And I said, wait, what would you like them to, to be? Well, I'm not sure, they should be square kind of, and I'm not sure about the color, what kind of doors, maybe glass or gold tinted, I don't know. But we'll figure that out later. And so I'm supposed to give them a price based on that sort of level of ambiguity? I tell them to, I'll see you later. I can't do that. I would be crazy to give a figure not knowing what the parameters are. And my perceptions might be off here, but my level of comfort with where we are with a number of those discussions, what, we've talked about visions and use somewhat, but I'm not, I don't feel like we've landed on a spot that a vendor can say, okay, this is what I can program for, this is what I can allow or I should allow for. There's a lot of stuff that in my mind, my senses, that is pretty open-ended. And our staff has told us in documentation and in conversations that it is essential for us to provide both staff and a vendor with clear expectations. And frankly, again, I may have this wrong, maybe I haven't paid enough attention, but I'm not feeling a comfort level adequate enough to tell someone, this is the deal, this is what you're working with, this is what you need to provide us with. So when I think, again, acknowledging that RFPs are great, thinking about an extension on this contract, I think gives us the opportunity to experience a couple of things. Number one, it gives back two years that were ripped away from, by no one's fault, from the experience of our vendor to prove what they can do. And would also give us a better knowledge of what the numbers actually are. Is it just a fluke or is it a trend that they would continue to provide for us? Also, and maybe more importantly, it gives us a little time, forgive me, it gives this, this commission, this council, I won't be here, the time to wrestle in greater depth some of these issues. We've talked about, we want the community involved in the Civic Center. Okay. When you, when you measure that against someone who's trying to book events, I heard, you know, well, if there's a free night, we can slip stuff in. To me, that's rather optimistic. You don't just say, oh, we got a free night, let's go do something. Oh, go call some people, we'll play basketball. You, these guys, I'm hoping, put a little more effort into planning that stuff ahead of time and out of necessity and for their well-being and state of mind, they need that opportunity to plan ahead so that all these things run well. So, you know, there's a balance between what you can just let in and, and what you have to allow space for planning and so forth. So what that balance is, this group can talk about that and decide what that is, if you can, to the degree that you can. We've talked about the makeup of the, of the board. Is it still effective or necessary in its current makeup? Well, we talked a little bit about that, but there's no conclusion that I heard. And those are sensitive discussions, ones that should not be taken lightly, need time to talk about that, analyze it, involve the board in those discussions. So that and many other things that need to be accomplished would be able to be addressed in that additional time. And two years goes by fast, believe me. So I think, you know, it gives the city council and others involved the opportunity to have those discussions, make those determinations, come up with a clearer vision, clearer parameters, both for staff and for our potential vendors to deal with. Seems to me life would be a lot easier in that circumstance. So even though I like RFPs and I'm not necessarily opposed to that idea, it seems more prudent to me to allow an extension for all this stuff to sort of settle out a little bit and give everybody an opportunity to make better decisions and do things right, do the right things in the right way. So I'm going to be voting in favor of the recommendation since we're showing our hands here anyway. Thank you.
Any other discussion from council?
I only have a couple of things to add. One is, I want to, I want to thank the Holland Civic Center Place Board. For those people who don't know, they're all volunteers. They are not getting paid a nickel for doing this. They're taking time out of their day to do a difficult and challenging job. And I know it's a difficult and challenging job because I was one of the first members of the Holland, of the Civic Center Place Board. I was the first chair of the Civic Center Place Board. And I served with most of the people on the Civic Center Place Board. They're great people. They're smart people. And those people that I didn't serve with, I recommended their appointment to the Civic Center Place Board because that's one of the things that the mayor gets to do. And I don't take recommendations lightly that are made by the people that are on the ground. But there are times where, as Mr. Freeman said, at this table, we have a slightly different perspective than the board does. And as is often said at the Holland Board of Public Works Board, they have the power to recommend. This council has the power to decide. We are elected by the people of the Holland, uh, people of the City of Holland to make decisions on their behalf. And we are supposed to be stewards of the resources of the people of City of Holland. And that's not just tax dollars, but that's also the assets. And the Civic Center Place is one of, in my mind, the most valuable assets that we have in the City of Holland. And there's been intimation tonight that somehow a vote that we make is either going to be a vote of confidence or a vote of no confidence in VenueWorks. Chris, HR, let me tell you, in my mind, that's not what this is. This is our taking the responsible choice of looking at the options that are available to us for the running of that facility. I said at one of the study sessions, I understand what the numbers are, I've seen the numbers, I've looked at the numbers, I don't have anything to compare those numbers to. You know, Mr. Peters said, you know, can't we admit that this is really impressive? I don't know. I've got one point on a graph, I don't have anything to compare it to. And frankly, when we were first, when we first issued an RFP for a management company for the Civic Center Place, we didn't know what options were available to us. There wasn't a single member of that board, or frankly, staff, that knew VenueWorks existed. And I'll tell you, I was incredibly impressed with VenueWorks and the response to the RFP that they gave. And they responded to an RFP that I guarantee you is more vague than any RFP that we're going to put forward now because we didn't know five years ago what we know about that facility now. And we've got the opportunity now to take a look at what options are available. And frankly, I agree with Mr. Byrd, I think VenueWorks has a big head start over anybody else in this RFP process. And I'd love to see them be the, the obvious choice at the end of an RFP process because that's going to give us the opportunity, sitting at this table, to say we did everything we could to make sure we were good stewards of the assets of the people of the City of Holland. Since we're all showing our hand, I'm going to be voting for an RFP process. Kathy, would you please call the roll? It'll be clear, do you want, do you want clarification on what we're voting for? The clarif, the, the, the motion that is on the table is to accept the recommendation of the Holland Civic Center Place Board to city staff to renegotiate the contract modifications and obtain a two-year extension of the contract with VenueWorks for the management of the Holland Civic Center Place. So a yes vote is a yes to extend the contract. A no vote says you do not want to simply extend the contract as renegotiated.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, but would be to not necessarily extend the contract, but to negotiate, renegotiate a contract for two years.
Thank you for that clarification.
There's not a contract before this council.
Thank you very much for that clarification, Mr. Duckworth, I appreciate that. Yes. It is, it is to recommend to city staff to renegotiate a contract that, that we do not know the terms of yet. All right.
No means, does that automatically mean RFP?
No, it does not.
So that just means we're not going to?
We're not accepting the recommendation of the board.
Okay, gotcha.
All right. Any other clarification that anyone needs before we vote? Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Soul?
Yes.
Aron Horst?
No.
Hookstra?
Yes.
Raymond?
No.
Byrd?
No.
Freeman?
No.
Peters?
Yes.
Corbin?
No.
Mayor Box?
No.
Motion fails.
Thank you. Are there any other motions that council members would like to make in regard to this matter?
I would move that we enter into an RFP process that the city would manage for, for, oh my gosh, Civic Center.
The management of the Civic Center Place?
My gosh, I'm having a stroke.
Point of order.
Yes, Mr. Hookstra.
Is it in order to make a motion regarding that at this point or does that have to be taken up under item fifteen? I'm asking.
Okay. Our chief governance officer agrees with you.
Hey, that's the first time in a long time.
All right. Thank you. So that was withdrawn. Moving on to then our next item, item number thirteen, communications from the city manager.
I'll be brief. Hold your plus. First, there was a open house held by Hope College today that they advertised that I put out also to you. Really, I think it's a helpful reminder of what all of you approved in the unified development ordinance process. And what it spells out is that before a developer submits something that Planning Commission and quite frankly, even planning staff reacts to as far as a full proposal, that we actually require a development and a developers to reach out to stakeholders and have meetings in the neighborhood first. So they did that with the DDA yesterday. They did that in the community yesterday theoretically. And why you all approve that is because then they can get that early feedback from the public and then they can incorporate that, or not, but they can incorporate that into their proposal that really starts the process when they submit it to staff. So not only cool to hear about Hope College moving forward with an idea they have on their property that fronts on Eighth Street and extends into their campus, but also just kind of reminder of why we do that process. And I don't think we can possibly remind the community of that more often, that really they're the, they're the first step in the process. Also, really exciting, Brian, Brian White's out there. You heard from our parks staff, he's out there, not here thankfully. He's relaxing with his family tonight. We have our parks staff tonight that talked about it. Matt's always on this. The number of capital projects that we've got going on in the community right now is pretty intense. I always feel particularly bad for Brian at this time of the year because just getting those road projects done is a lot, is a heavy lift. But Sixth Street, the fire station and parks and others. But we are also in the final stages, hope to have some information and we'll be back in front of you on the ice rink, hopefully within a month or so. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Keith. I just have two items tonight. One is a reminder of an event coming up, not this Saturday, but next Saturday. And this is the last regular meeting before that happens. On Saturday, September sixteenth, is the Blue Teardrop Walk for VFW Suicide Awareness. We are going to be meeting at the VFW Hall at 175 West Eighth Street, right here in downtown Holland. The walk is going to start promptly at nine AM. You can register through the VFW. They are, they would like you to don't, collect donations for the walk with all proceeds going to the Battle Creek Area VA for Veteran Suicide Awareness. There'll be a benefit brunch that'll be held on the same day at the VFW from ten AM to noon as well. It's a great walk. I've done that for the last couple of years. I'll be there this year as well. We walk from the VFW essentially out to South Shore, out to South Shore Drive and Grafskup and back. It's a great group. It's a long, it's a long walk, but you get to walk along Lake Mack, you get to walk, walk along the boardwalk with those freshly painted rails. It's a, it's a great little walk, especially on a wonderful Saturday morning. So I encourage folks to participate in that. And then also I have a proclamation for Hispanic Heritage Month. Whereas, the City of Holland joins other communities across our nation in honoring the many ways the Hispanic community contributes to our common goals in working together toward a stronger and more inclusive future and a more prosperous America for all. And whereas, we pause to celebrate National Hispanic Heritage Month from September fifteen until October fifteen, twenty twenty-three. The twenty twenty-three theme for Hispanic Heritage Month is prosperity, power, and progress, celebrating generations of Hispanics in our nation. And whereas, the Hispanic population in America is estimated at sixty-three point seven million, of which approximately five hundred twenty-one thousand two hundred and thirty live in Michigan and eight thousand two hundred and forty-one, approximately twenty-four point two percent of our population live in Holland. And whereas, we recognize the contributions of Hispanics, Latinos, and those Americans whose ancestors came from Spain, Mexico, the Caribbean, Central America, and South America. And whereas, we benefit from the many contributions of Hispanic healthcare professionals, educators, agricultural workers, community leaders, factory workers, pastors, business owners, public service workers, service industry personnel, volunteers, and private residents. And whereas, the heart and soul of the Hispanic community rests in their devotion to faith, family, and resilience to withstand hardship. In that same vein, we recognize the great strength of current and future Hispanic youth and the contributions they will make in our community and this great nation. And whereas, since nineteen sixty-four, Latin Americans United for Progress, La Oub, has been diligently serving the Latin American community and acting as a driving force for change in the Holland community. The organization mission is to empower Latinos to actively participate in creating a better community for everyone through advocacy, education, and celebration. And whereas, we also celebrate organizations like Alegria Latina, a radio program providing news, music, and information to the Hispanic community, founded by Lupita Reyes in nineteen sixty-four and currently, are you still currently doing that, Belinda? And currently, Belinda Soul is also a disjacket. I apologize, I haven't listened in a year or so. Founded by Lupita Reyes in nineteen sixty-four and the many ethnic stories, restaurants, and business enterprises started by our local Hispanic community. And whereas, we invite residents to participate in the Hispanic Heritage Month programming throughout our city. Now therefore, I, Nathan Box, Mayor of the City of Holland, Michigan, and members of the Holland City Council, do hereby proclaim September fifteen until October fifteen, twenty twenty-three, Hispanic Heritage Month. We encourage our residents to share in this annual tribute by learning and celebrating the generations of Hispanic and Latin Americans who have influenced and enriched our community. Given under my hand and the seal of the City of Holland, this sixth day of September, twenty twenty-three, Mayor Nathan Box. And that is all I have this evening. Next item, appointments, motions, and communications from council members. Any communications, motions from council members? Ms. Aaron Sors and then Ms. Soul.
Okay. I attended my last Holland Energy Fund meeting today and I just want to let you know it's in great shape. They are hiring a new sustain, a brand new position, a new sustainability coordinator because business is so good. And between Dan Borzma and Andrew Reynolds and Lynn McCammon, it's in great shape financially. All the metrics are falling into place. They're working with community organizations like Community Action House and Good Sam to help people, you know, achieve energy savings in their homes. They're going into, they're working with manufactured homes now, rentals. I mean, it's a whole, it's a program that is really showing results and I think this will only continue. So I'm sorry to leave them, but they're, it's a program that I think has just exploded in effectiveness over the last two years. That's it.
Ms. Soul?
Well, I just want to say, we all know that rent, you know, or housing is a problem. But this, this week, Michigan renters aimed their concerns that rent is too damn high and outside the Capitol of Lansing or the Capitol, at the Capitol. So I just, you know, I just started working at Good Sam and Good Samaritan and I just want to say I'm, it's one of my values of, you know, people being sheltered, having a safe, secure place to live. Being a child that didn't have that consistency, I'm grateful that I landed in Holland, honestly. I didn't know I was going to be here this long. Actually, I wanted to move when I seen, you know, when I was like, there's a church on every corner and whatnot. But I'm grateful that I have roots here at IESUS Roots. And, you know, being fortunate to be a second time homeowner and then even building an accessory dwelling unit, Tricia has left, but it's on its way and I think Elizabeth has seen it and you can see it from the street and it's the excitement and, but, you know, it is a problem. We still have many people that are unsheltered, struggling to me, ends me. And I hear the stories, you know, my car broke down and, you know, I had, you know, my, my water bill, I had a leak and this and this and that. And so I would invite you to, to really look into Good Samaritan, give if you can. But also being Hispanic Heritage Month, I wanted to share something. Thank you, Mayor, for sharing the proclamation. But for me, it's important to, to just share a poem if I could, if that's not too much trouble. No, I lost it now. Well, maybe I'll share this quote. "One of the greatest things you have in life is that no one has the authority to tell you what you want to be. You are the one who will decide what you want to be. Respect yourself and respect the integrity of others as well. The greatest thing you have is your self-image, a positive opinion of yourself." I don't have the author of that, but I guess, you know, being proud of my heritage, but being proud of who I am, you know, being able to sit here, it's a privilege. Being on Alegria Latina is a privilege. But more importantly, being a part of a community that sees you is, is important to me. So I'm honored that being the first Latina, Latino, because I know my predecessor was of Hispanic and there's been others, that I looked up to, Luciano Hernandez and, oh, I'm drawing a blank. No, 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 I know Raul, I said my predecessor, but before him, he passed away, Victor. I just seen his house for sale and I was like, oh, bless his heart, because we used to run each, into each other. But, so anyways, I'm very grateful. So thank you for accepting me and seeing me in this community. It's now my home thirty-three years later, so thank you.
Any other motions, communications? Mr. Byrd?
Yes, thank you. So for me, one of the things that kept me here is there's a church on every corner. And speaking to what you just spoke to and what Nathan has spoken to as well, homelessness and suicides, two of those things are things that plague our veterans in our country. So thank you, it's Suicide Prevention Month and to speak on that, I wanted to say something, but you hit that. So that's a big thing for me. I think, my opinion, we spend so much time on other things and not on things that have built a foundation in this country. And those foundational people who we live on their shoulders are sometimes those who carry the heaviest burdens, burdens of no purpose, burdens of not knowing what to do of purpose and they fought for this country. Some of them have no homes to live in. And so I challenge us all to look for ways and ways to help our veterans. I think they're very underrepresented. And Blue Teardrop, five K is a great way to get involved and to start that. I have not participated in that. I've used other opportunities to do that, but this is a great opportunity for people in our community. Two things that I wanted to mention a few weeks ago that I did not, Mike Trethuie would be very upset with me, so, and I'm sure you guys know exactly what that is. One is the truck parade. We had the truck parade that already passed. And so next year, I'll do a better job at that one. The other one, more sobering in a sense, we had a six-year anniversary on August the seventh, two thousand seventeen. We had an individual who was working on the Holland Civic Center at the time during the renovations who was on the roof and the roof collapsed. In that collapse, in that accident, he lost his life. His name was Ruben Gomez Vasquez. He was thirty-eight years old from Grand Rapids. We have a plaque in our Civic Center to honor him and out of anything else, I just wanted to, you know, we had a lot of conversation about the Civic Center tonight and previous weeks as well. And as we started down this road, I was just remembering just the heartache with that, you know? Whenever someone dies, it's a heartache, but it hit kind of close to home, closer to home because of, this is something that as a community, we look so forward to having in our, having in our community, something that the community rallied around and to have someone lose their life in that situation, not good, not good at all. And I just wanted to remember him in that situation. Other things that we have going on, we have the community, what's it called actually? The Green Commute Week. That means for us lazy people, walk a little bit. That means drive a little bit, not drive, but walk a little bit and ride your bike. This is something that goes on from the weeks of September tenth to the sixteenth. Ride share, different things to help conserve our environment. So I encourage everyone to participate with that as well.
And Quincy, if they register with the McIntyre Area Coordinating Council, I don't want to step on anybody, I don't know if you're going there. If you reckon, if you, if you register with the McIntyre Area Coordinating Council, you can win prizes, gift, gift cards. And in previous years, they've given them to the people who, who were the most green and otherwise put the most miles in. This year, they're all random. So even somebody like you, Quincy, can, can actually win this year.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm planning on ride sharing. I'm going to have Mr. Keith Van Beek pick me up each day and from home and drop me off at work and drop me off at home.
Other duties as a sign.
Yes. No, I'm just joking, fool. But a lot of things to, I, that's all I have. That's it.
Any, any other appointments, motions, communications from council members? Mr. Freeman?
Right. To wrap up our Civic Center conversation, I'd like to extend that RF, excuse me, the motion for to create an RFP for the process of running the Civic Center through the city manager's office.
Does that provide enough clarity for you, Mr. Van Beek and Mr. Duckworth?
Yes.
All right, thank you. We have a motion for Freeman's support by Corbin. Any discussion by council members? Seeing none, Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Aaron Sors?
Yes.
Hookstra?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Byrd?
Yes.
Freeman?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Corbin?
Yes.
Soul?
Yes.
Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Great, thank you. Any other appointments, motions, communications from council members? Mr. Corbin?
Communications to our city manager, though, I would, I would hope that we have plenty of opportunity, as what's been spoken across the days, to provide input on that RFP. I know you've heard from us multiple times, but I think there should be some more opportunities to hear from us again. So I just hope that that can be worked in over the next few study sessions leading up to that RFP process. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm not going to commit to a timeline, but I, what I found and what you have given me feedback on in the past is you do better when you react to a document and improve that document. So I'll get a document first and then you can tear it apart.
Any other appointments, motions, communications from council members? Mr. Freeman?
Just one last. Former council member Todd Whitman, who has sat here for many years serving our community, his wife passed away in this last week, that service was this last weekend. And if you are in relationship with him, to be able to support him whatever way that is appropriate in your life, I think that would be a warm welcome to make that happen to extend your sympathy to he and his family.
Any other appointments, motions, communications? Just one more motion we're looking for at this time. Move by Freeman, is there support?
Support.
Support by Soul, any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. All of those, same sign. Motion carries, we are adjourned. Thank you.